So, good afternoon. Welcome to our special council meeting. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So Melanie, roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Colleton.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Here.
And Mayor Crater.
Here. Okay, so pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, the town council will hold a closed session to consider the appointment, employment, evaluation of performance, discipline and/or dismissal of the town manager. With that, we're going to adjourn to closed session.
I'm sorry. That's an option.
I couldn't see anything. I couldn't see anything.
No, so you didn't see what you were discussing there?
I couldn't see anything. I can see the wings.
I couldn't see the lyrics.
Yeah, I mean, somebody did. They did.
Somebody else did something.
Cyclones.
Such as.
What actually told me?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know.
I think.
I think he tried to appropriate the passage. Sean, I'll call you Sean too. Um, yeah.
Yes.
And I don't.
Absolutely.
Yeah. With a lighter.
It's a little bit.
He's being a gentleman.
It's actually.
Yes, yes.
Look at him.
Great.
I don't know. I need to turn around. My microphone is rolling.
So.
Oh.
We've got some time to.
Hey, and the gentleman's coming on Friday again. And we do have a rejection today.
So Rose has asked her to have us. And we'd like to. This is what we're also here to ask. So, yeah. He's got ten. We have four rounds.
Oh, wait. It's construction.
Hey, thanks for the glasses.
Oh, my gosh.
I was like.
Maybe watch the show.
You're good. It's a really interesting.
I see the curtain. I see the stretchers.
Compared to what's up. But it shoots. So.
Oh.
Like, they're not watching.
Yeah.
I, uh, I just.
I'm sure.
No.
Yeah.
So first thing, we're going to report on our closed session and we did not finish. So after the meeting, we are going to go back into closed session. So with that, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. The Councilman LaSalle gives the invocation.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Gracious God, thank you for this opportunity to gather and serve our community. Grant us wisdom in our decisions, respect in our discussions, and a shared commitment to the common good. May our actions tonight reflect fairness, integrity, and care for all those we represent. Amen.
Melanie, roll call.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Colton?
Here.
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Here.
And Mayor Crutter?
Here. Okay. Before we move on here, good evening, everyone. Before we get to the first item, I want to take a moment to address an issue. A lot of issues relating to the town have transpired over the last several weeks, and we've all received calls and heard all the rumors. We cannot share any more information at this time than we already have. Closed-session items and personnel issues cannot be shared in public. Some information may, in certain circumstances, be able to be shared in the future. Let me share that our building department inspections are caught up and we are back to next-day inspections in most cases. There have been some issues brought up that needed to be addressed. I will tell you that doing the right thing, in a lot of cases, is much harder than doing the easy thing, which would be to do nothing at all. So with that being said, we'll move on. So Item 1E, Presentation by Karenette of Paradise Executive Director Ashley Lundberg on the organization's work in growth in the community.
My name is Ashley Lundberg and I'm here with Brooke Gardner, my Director of Development. Tonight, we are here because we want to inform you and the community of the important work we are doing to serve and support those in need. I first want to say thank you. Thank you for your countless hours you've spent to help rebuild Paradise after the campfire. Karenette is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) religious organization. We are completely funded by private donations and grant funding. We were established in 1993 when two women in the community saw the need to help support women in unplanned pregnancies. In 2015, we became a licensed medical clinic. We are overseen by the CDPH. We have two doctors, four RNs, and RDMS on staff at our clinic. Our mission is to minister in the name of Jesus Christ to the emotional, practical, and spiritual needs of those dealing with unplanned pregnancies and providing spiritual and practical resources through prevention, intervention, and restoration. Our free and confidential services include pregnancy testing, education on abortion, adoption referrals, and parenting. We provide limited OB ultrasounds, STI testing and treatment, sports physicals to the local high school and junior highs, sex education, abstinence education in the junior high system, UTI testing and treatment, peer counseling, reproductive loss care. This is for women who have experienced miscarriages and abortions. We provide parenting classes with incentives, and we opened a men's legacy center to reach dads in our community. Karenette does not perform or refer for abortions, but we will educate her about what an abortion Since the campfire, we lost our little yellow house that many of you probably remember right across from McDonald's. However, our medical clinic was spared. In 2021, we reopened. That year, we saw 16 clients, 53 appointments. In '22, we served 38 clients with 162 appointments. In '23, we served 116 clients with 334 appointments. In '24, 206 clients with 384 appointments. In 2012, '25, we've already served 212 individual clients with 301 appointments. As you can see, there is a great need in our community to serve women, men, and children. Every service we provide is completely free to our clients. And our services go beyond medical care. We provide parenting classes so that they can earn things like free car seats, cribs, strollers. We even help with bills sometimes as needed. Why have we grown so much? In 2023, we opened a second clinic in Oroville. We saw a need to provide medical services there in our local pregnancy center, so we're reaching Oroville as well. This past January, we opened a men's legacy center. Our staff saw the need to reach fathers. We want to provide healthy communities here. We want to help build healthy families. We have more than 30 dads currently enrolled in our program. And currently, there is no OBGYN in Paradise. I'm sure you're aware of that. So we provide OB ultrasounds ranging from five weeks of pregnancy through '24, offering women their first ultrasound, and helping women who are experiencing things like ectopic pregnancy or miscarriages by providing the help they need and getting them to the ER where they need to be.
So what's next for Karenette? We will continue to serve them both through the men's legacy center, peer counseling, classes, and more. We will strategically plan to continue expanding vital services to women, men, and families here on the ridge with the hopes of adding well-women services in the near future. We desire to see healthier families and a healthier community as we rebuild Paradise together. To close, I would like to direct your attention to the sweet little girl pictured on the screen. There she is. This is baby Evelyn, as we call her. About two years ago, we received a phone call from her mom, who had just left a local abortion clinic. She went to the clinic seeking counseling because she'd broken up with her boyfriend and she was afraid of raising a baby alone. She was told they do not offer counseling, and instead, they insisted that she take an abortion pill to end her pregnancy. Almost immediately after taking the pill, she received a text from her boyfriend saying, "Get out of there. Children are a blessing." They immediately started researching if the effects of this pill could be undone, and it led them to Karenette. Once there, they received a treatment called abortion pill reversal, which is, it involves a prescription of progesterone, which is a naturally occurring hormone. Through this treatment, baby Evelyn's life was saved. Thank you. I agree. Her parents have taken countless classes and have been in peer counseling with us for over two years. The dad was recently granted full custody of his son from a previous relationship, and we are thrilled to announce that Evelyn will have a baby brother within a month or two. They have gone above and beyond and testified to Congress on the importance of abortion pill reversal and the effect it had on their family. Our goal at Karenette is to love men, women, and children, not only during their pregnancy, but to help them build a strong and healthy legacy for many generations to come. Thank you so much for having us. That's the end of our presentation, but I think we have a few minutes if you have any questions for us.
Questions?
No question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you guys do. You do a great service and great people, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Item 1F is Presentation by the Paradise Art Center and then the Gold Nugget Museum.
Councilmembers, is that on?
No.
That'll be on. I can just use my teacher voice.
Well, it doesn't work on the...
Yeah, just press the mic.
It's on the side. Here, give it to me.
I'm an artist, not a technology guy. My name's Greg Sanchez, and I am the President of the Paradise Art Center. And thank you for having us, and thank you also for funding us in a way in the last two years with trying to promote the town. I'm not the expert on TOT funds, but I have an expert with me, who is our former president, Kathleen Deisser. And she wrote the report to you and is very extensive. We're very proud of how we achieved what your goal was for TOT funds, and we think that it's worked really well for us. So she knows what she's talking about more about this than I do, and I'm going to let Kathleen do this on her.
Hello, all. And it must be said that while I am no longer on the board, I will still be in charge of Community Outreach Committees, so you will still be seeing me around. The generosity of the TOT funds for us has made a lot of positive growth for the art center. This last year, we've grown a lot. Actually, if you compare it to the 13 members that were there right after the fire, Paradise Art Center currently has 229 memberships, which is an increase in 2,189% since the We are noticing with the changes in the town, we're getting more families here, which is increasing our actual number of members because we're getting family memberships now. So as of today, we currently have 296 individual members. Before the fire, we had 64. No, 64 memberships, and we almost got to 89 members. So we are doing better than we have ever done in our almost 60-year history. So, and a lot of this does help from the TOT funds. We are giving more events. As you know, last year, we put up the big mural on our side. Well, we had some, a little bit left over from first year, and that went to actually lighting up our mural at night, which is really nice to go down Pearson and to be able to see it and see the art. And it's all solar, and it was very cost-effective, we feel. We are getting a lot more foot traffic than we ever did before. There's an increase, and we have a lot more events. There's been an increase of 221 attendees from last year's major event totals. That's a big thing for the art center that before, people didn't know we were even around. Our satellite at NICS has been very productive for bringing in people outside of town, actually to know about the art, to go to NICS or whatever. In that, from NICS count, they had 16,300 visitors last year. Of that, I will tell you how the... And I know it from, because I'm there a lot. I see a lot of people coming in. As you know, we now have an official gallery at NICS. We've had it, this is our fifth-year anniversary of having arts there. This past year, according to April's records, totals from areas outside the ridge, of those 16,000, at least 2,500 are from Butte County that do not live on the ridge. Outside Butte County, she estimates 325. There are individuals who come to see actually that wall, and I've met a lot of them personally, and people also buy. Out of that, new people that come in specifically into NICS to see our monthly show average about 2,000 people. Total of the ridge, most of them are from the ridge, 1,900, but they're coming in from Sterling City, they're coming in from Magaliere, they're, you know, up and down our corridor. And, but, people from the ridge, there's 1,900 people coming in to see the new show. Total from Butte County, not from the ridge, to see them, is at least 100. And right now, she says that no one came, I guess specifically to see the show, but we know we've sold quite a few paintings from NICS. And every so often, we get visitors up at our thing. By the way, did you receive the copy of my report that I submitted in June? Because I'm just glossing over this. If so, if not, I will get you all copies, but I show you exactly what our data collection has done for us. One of our efforts was to collect data for it and figure out who was coming and why they were coming and why they were coming to the art center and the town. And we did a lot of, you know, those codes where you could, you know, put your phone on it and do it. We placed one at NICS and several around the art center. We even have one that's metal that's on our mural that tells a little bit about the mural, but also does a survey about why they were in town. That has been one of our biggest disappointments this past year because people are either so into the event and excited, and we usually have a good time at our events, that they don't want to take the time to do it. And so you either have people harassing them or whatever. So our data collection this year was pretty much by the old counters. And again, I won't go into it, but I've got a tally of all our different events here, and how many came from out of town, some out of state, we've had out of state whatever that had come. So I won't go all this, but if you want, I'm more than willing to provide you with copies of this.
Send it to Colette, and she can pass it down.
Okay.
I have the reports for all of them. They're just not included in your packet because these are meant to be an overview, but I do have all of the reports for each of the entities.
Okay. So that, and then one of the things that, in an odd way, TOT has also helped advance is collaborative art activities in the art center, I mean, in the arts. We have stuff going on with Theater on the Ridge. We are big proponents of the symphony and the chorus and the ballet. And if you attended Carnival of the Animals, you know how many people came to that. That event was pretty unique for this town, and unfortunately, it's very hard to capture. I know there were a lot of people from Chico there. I know there were a lot of grandparents from out of the county. There were a lot of people there. And by the collaboration of different groups together, we're exposing our individual audiences to other arts. So there is kind of like, I hate to use the word like cross-contamination, because that sounds negative, but we are expanding the interest of the arts in this town. And a lot of that's done through our efforts, and the way TOT helps us out is the art center has, in the past, like the mural and the signage. This last year, we spent, let's see, most of it, a lot more on advertising in Sacramento, in Redding, in Public Thing. Brian Corbett does a great job for us, and so, you know, we're on KCFR, and so we're promoting a lot of activities and a lot of across-the-board kind of collaborations that the arts are doing here that also sometimes tie in with a town event. So we're using our funds to really try and solicit our tourists here and to let them know that Paradise is an arts and culture destination, among other wonderful things. So this past year, with the funds we had from that, we had $728 that was left over. We were given $9,765. Of that, $7,495 was spent on advertising alone. And this is some, well, KCFR goes to Northern California, okay? So a lot of it's outside the community. One of the things that's been very hard, and I think this last year it's been absolutely amazing, is TOT provides us the funds to do signage. So now, all of a sudden, we've got some great signs up. Like if you go by the art center, you know that there's a classroom here, you know there's a gallery there, you know there's a pottery studio. Those signs alone are gathering people off the street, both, you know, just walk-bys or tourists in town. Of course, the mural, which you helped with some of your funding, has brought in a lot of visitors to the town, and there are people always there looking at that. So the signage total this year was 2,273, and some of them, by the way, are also placement-heavy brackets where you put in, you know, your big poster boards and say, you know, "Paradise Art Center" or "Event Today." And they're portable enough that, say, if we're not using them, we can even let some of our fellow organizations use them too. But it's signage, so you'll see one at Clark, at Pearson, in front of our building, at FER. So they're all around town, so it kind of gets people going into other areas of town. And then, of course, we did spend $682 on finishing up the mural and the lighting of it. So that is how we spent last year, and we're on our last year, that's third-year funding. And what our proposal is, is to keep doing mostly publicity. Of that $9,000-whatever money, $8,000 we're going to devote to expanded advertising, focusing on radio, television, and regional print publications. And, you know, we consult with the Chamber on what, you know, maybe the best target areas to do, and, like I say, Brian Corbett does a great job with that. The remaining funds, which is still a little over $1,000, is basically print... The remaining funds, which is still a little over $1,000, is basically printing the inserts for large sign holders and producing a newly designed three-folded brochure for distribution at local and regional visitor centers. On behalf of Paradise Art Center membership and community, I extend our deepest thanks to the town of Paradise for its generous support of our mission and programming through TOT rounds. This investment has made a meaningful and lasting difference to our organization and to the community we serve, and hopefully it's making a difference for the economic development of our town, which all of us need in order to thrive and prosper. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Of course, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, I was in touch with the Gold Nugget Museum just today. It sounds like they have a new interim executive director who was working to be here tonight, but, and I expected he would be, but it looks like unfortunately he is not. So I will follow up with him again after this meeting.
Okay. So, for next month, Colette?
Let's hope so.
That would be my hope. In our discussion today, he was going to try to make it today, but I don't think he is. So I told him I would follow up with next steps if he was not able to make it.
Is that going to hold up the funding to the other groups?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, item 1G, Campfire Recovery Updates. Written reports are included in the agenda packet, so we'll start with Colette Curtis, Recovery and Economic Development Director. Colette?
Just wanted to comment, Colette. I've heard numerous positive comments about the utility box murals. Folks have asked me, well, how did that happen? And I'll, I had to explain the process and that we're going to do the additional nine boxes the next go-round the Arts Centers involved in it. But again, job well done, a lot of positives. I have not heard one negative response from anybody about that. Nobody said they hate it. I didn't talk to Woody, though, of course.
I had, I had one question on the Workforce Training Center. I know the last update was that we were waiting for the new scope alignment to be completed. Has that been completed?
Not yet. So we're still realigning that scope with our partners. Some things have changed with them. So we are still targeting, starting the educational portion, so the curriculum in January with our partners. The location, though, is a little bit up in the air because we were expecting to do some construction at the, at Paradise High School, and that is, we're working on that and what that's going to look like. So even if that is delayed, we will start in January. That's the, that's the idea, but we're still working on that.
And I know, I know you had mentioned also in a recent, an email a couple of weeks ago, there was going to be some face-to-face meetings with those partners. Has that transpired to help bring that into?
Yes. Yeah, we have been meeting with those partners since the last meeting, yes.
Thank you.
So, Colette, I have a question. On our emergency siren, the in-home monitors, what's the latest on that?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. I'm going to have Brian Selecky come up and give some of those details on that. He's the project manager in the Recovery and Economic Development Department, and he has those details for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, and thanks for the question. So, yes, so for those who aren't aware, about a year, we were given council direction to work with our contractors on the emergency warning siren system to see if there's a way to supplement the system. That led to a discussion about in-home units that can be added to people's homes that would mirror the sirens from the towers and also have a visual component for those who might be hearing impaired or allow them to better hear the system. And so we worked with our contractors, we worked with FEMA to get that included into our grant, and we are going to be announcing today, or probably tomorrow, that the registration for those units is open and the first ones are ready to be delivered. And so we do have funding for 900 of them. It will be on a first-come, first-served basis. We do also have another grant in process that could potentially supply up to 3,000 more of them. And so this is a great little unit, you can keep it at your house, it has a 72-hour battery. In the event of an emergency, you could pull it off the wall and get in the car with it and continue to get alerts on it as you were evacuating. So that should be, there's the first 100 are ready to be delivered as of today, and then we expect 300 of them to be available each week for the next few weeks.
How do you go?
Is there, Brian, is there any, the selection, like, do you have to qualify? I mean, like, okay, not just anybody can get one because, oh, I wanted the new note. You know, I mean, there's going to be some qualifications.
So we are doing, we're going to launch tomorrow a preregistration to get, so we can get kind of a community demand, because it's going to depend on what the demand is. You know, it might be that there's 600 people who want them and everyone can have one, or it might be that there's 2,500 people or homes that want one, and so we'll have to come up with a priority list, and so.
But I mean, it's essentially the purpose of these units was because not everybody, maybe they have hearing impairment or they're, you know, whatever. I mean, that was why, they can't hear the sirens from outside their house. That was, so are we going to qualify people? I mean, you're going to have to prove you have a hearing impairment or disability? Or are we just going to give them to anybody that wants them?
Not at this time. We're going to, we are, we do ask on the registration if you have a diagnosed hearing impairment, because if we do have a limited number for this first $900 or 900 amount batch, then it could be potential that we prioritize the hearing impaired. But it just depends on what the initial registration interest is. And so we encourage people to sign up as soon as they can, and we expect to launch that probably tomorrow or at the latest on Thursday.
So how is, how's that going to work where they sign up to, to come to our website? How's it work?
So we'll push it out on social media, we'll put it out on email, it'll be on the website, we will put out a press release. It all links to a very simple form that is basically name, address, APN, and then do you have a diagnosed hearing impairment? And then that will come to us, and then we'll hold on to those for a week or two to see what the demand is, and then we will send them directly to another website where they can order it directly, and it'll get delivered to their house.
Did you say that you want them to put the APN?
Well, they don't, we're requesting it, it's not required. It just makes it a little easier.
Some people don't even know what APN stands for unless they look at their tax.
Yeah, that's not a required box, that's an optional, but it just saves us a little time if I had to put it in. Because, you know, the FEMA requirement for the grant is that the unit does stay with the APN. So if you were to move, you would have to leave it at the house that you're currently at, and then you could register hopefully for another one. They also, if we do run out of funds and do run out of units, they are available for purchase, which the price point will be, you know, a little bit determined based on current economics, but it's about $100 for a unit if you have to pay for one.
So is it available to a renter? They don't own, I mean, how does that work?
As long as it was staying with the APN, that would be fine. Because again, it's being registered to the house. We would, in a renter situation, we would probably ask for the owner to confirm that they want it installed at their house.
And I do just want to mention regarding the hearing impairment, that we do have specialized units for those who are hearing impaired that have a visual component. It's a subset of the total number of units that we have. So for those that really have a severe hearing impairment, there are ones that are, have visual, you know, the lights flash and that kind of thing. So we have specialized units specifically for those with a severe hearing impairment.
And actually, additional information that I haven't even told Colette yet is the price point ended up being the same between the units, and so they actually all have that feature. So, it was, you know, it ended up being a dollar difference between the non-
Yeah. And the only reason I ask those questions, Brian, is because it was my understanding when we tested all these sirens, so many people, you know, if you're inside and TV's on or whatever, you don't hear them, or there's construction going on out near you, you know. But I thought it was for those people because of large, there are a number of people in the community that have hearing impairment or other conditions where, you know, that's what I thought they were for. That's why I'm a little surprised that we're, oh, no, just anybody who wants one, just sign up.
Well, we are, again, we are gathering that input, and so it depends on what the demand is. It could be that there's only 500 households in the community that want one, and then we've got 400 extra to hang on to and give to people as it's needed. It's, we don't know what the demand will be quite yet.
And they only work with ours?
Correct.
So they can't sell the money there?
Nope.
Not that I would, anybody.
Any more questions for Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Can you explain the, and how it's called?
Yeah, the question was, can you explain exactly what these are? So this is a unit that you would plug in at your house somewhere in, you know, in your kitchen and wherever you would want it. And if the tower siren is activated, that unit would mirror the tower siren in your home from the unit. It also has a visual component, has a screen that if we were putting out a message with the system, the message would appear in text on the, on the, on the screen on the unit.
And do you have to have internet or it's a wireless?
No, it is, it is completely a self-sustained entity from the towers. The towers actually come, the signal is coming from the towers themselves.
With, like, PGN, they have people that have this medical baseline, people like that should have that. It should be a priority that they have that as well because they're disabled or whatever, they need time, more time to communicate, so they should be a priority. Hearing impaired, I hear an error, I have five minutes.
Yep. Yep, yeah, let's, let.
I think they're shared with the background.
Yep. So, yep, we're going to gather all that input and then we're going to move forward, so thank you.
Do you have a block in that form, or should have a block in that form, where people have special comments they want to put above and beyond their name and address? That way they can, those kinds of things.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Council.
Okay, Mark Matics, Public Works Director, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
I had one question under the recovery section. The Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation Grant, it looks like is going to be coming out for community input. Do we know how exactly they're going to be soliciting for community input?
Councilmember Lang, can you clarify where you're asking that question about?
Under recovery. The Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation Grant, that's listed.
Is this for, for Public Works?
I just, I, no, it was under Colette. I just couldn't get my mic on in time, sorry.
So sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, so.
Do we know how they're going to be soliciting for community input on how that grant is, how that funding is used?
Yes, so we get to determine that. So we are working with our CAC to administer this grant that we did receive for this plan. So we are establishing a working group for this grant to put together stakeholders. So that group is being put together now. We have a lot of specialized industry stakeholders that are in that group, and then we will be holding some community meetings, some workshops, online surveys, things like that that will be coming up. We also anticipate we will be working in conjunction with our planning department that's working on our general plan and doing some joint, joint work with their community input as well because some of those items overlap.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mark. Questions for Mark?
I have one comment, Mark. Clark Road and Pearson Road are a whole bunch nicer today than they were two weeks ago. It's looking good.
Thank you.
So slow down out there.
Okay, item 1H, Paradise Sewer Project Update. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Paradise Sewer Project. This update will be brief because we do have this item for the Council to consider later in the agenda this evening. But in short, from the August 14th Special Town Council Meeting, action was taken and direction was given to pursue our local wastewater treatment facility alternative, and our website has been updated to reflect that. I prepared a brief update for the last month's activities. In addition to that special meeting, our ad hoc committee has met, and we are bringing forward some recommendations before you later in the agenda. But environmental work is well on its way with the team hitting the ground running, and we're looking forward to, again, later in the agenda to keep this momentum going forward. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the Council might have.
Yeah, Mark, there was one question I had on the page that talks about the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers funding. You made the comment in there that the town has received notice that the USC determination that the work is unable to proceed under this authorization. Does that mean that money's not going to be available under that? Or what's the impact?
No. Yeah, thanks for the question. So right now, there's a $50 million authorization that was approved through Congressman Lamalfa's office dedicated to wastewater facilities in Butte County. The town of Paradise is the most interested and likely candidate for those funds. What has to happen to convert that author, I'm sorry, that authorization to an appropriation is a lot of work, and work that ultimately this time was not selected to proceed through an actual appropriation through Congress. And so with that, we did learn that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers did not have capacity to support our request. We put forward a $2 million request to draw down from that first $50 million. And so unfortunately, that $2 million request is not going forward, but we are actually in contact with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We made contact actually today to schedule our next meeting to talk about positioning for next year. I'll also mention that these funds, if we do secure them next year, will help us go towards what we really vision towards Phase Two of the sewer project. So all of the budget information that was prepared at the last meeting and as we go forward is not including this $50 million. While we'd love to have it and put it to good use, we really can only work within the universe that is real and approved and authorized through the various funding entities, and this one is not at this point. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay. Item 2, Consent Calendar.
I do have a card for item 2A.
Don't have much to say on it since you were graciously discussed it briefly, so I kind of just wanted to say that a lot of us don't quite understand the legality still of what a closed session is, and I think maybe we could all benefit from learning that a little bit more because from what we're reading in the minutes, it's a little concerning to us not knowing the whole picture. So I do want to say thank you to Mr. Huber, Hubber, how do you say it? And Mr. Crowder for responding to me that night, late at night, with an email in response to my concerns on the minutes regarding the DA being involved and closed sessions in general.
So we're not talking about the sewer?
No, 2A, sorry. That's what she said.
Minutes, she's talking about the minutes.
She, yeah.
For, for consent calendar?
Yeah, she called me in.
Consent calendar, the minutes are 2A.
So, so I had a different thing to say, so I just wanted to basically say thank you for responding to me in the way that you did and then for addressing it now. Hopefully, moving forward, we can do the same things and continue to learn together on what is allowed and what is happening. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Colton. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Colton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
I did have one question about it. On the minutes for the August 21st special meeting, it indicated that, did we make those corrections?
There wasn't, well, I can let, I don't want to ask, but there was no corrections to be made. It was, it was, it was following.
So the, I mean, she showed it to me that the following meeting was the one that Scott, they were-
It wasn't the August 21st one?
No, the August 19th, Scott read out, and the August 21st, Mayor Crowder read out.
Oh, I apologize then. Thank you.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're going to move on to public communication, but before we get in there, let me make it clear, I, you know, I've heard questions about what's happening with the Building Department audit, and at this time, we can't discuss that in any way in the future. We may be able to, but right now, we can't. So anyway, with that being said, let's go public comment cards.
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I might just take a moment, one of the things I want to make sure people understand, an individual has three minutes to speak on non-agenda-related items. If the item's on the agenda, wait for that item to come forward, but you can't give your time to someone else so that they would have six minutes or aggregate it together. Each individual gets three minutes, that's it.
And they need to sign it, or fill out a card, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
You can see it's all paradise mud because I had four children living in a school bus on our property, and that is how we were rebuilding. And I said, hey, you know, why are they being allowed to build this? I have their copy of the survey that we all agree on the line. We both agree on the survey line. And in fact, here's a survey that I had done showing the placement of their house in relation to the road, which is three feet from the roadway, and they currently park at the end of that roadway. And the problem is, and this is the problem with the lady that spoke, is that as parents, we're what, our children are watching our town and our police department be completely ineffectual. When we call and say our driveway is blocked, that at the end of a road, they're parking in such a way that we have about 16 feet to get through there, and someone cavalierly says, well, I can get through there. They can't. And so what I'd like, Woody, is for you to come, look at this, and I'd like to make sure that just because we have a private road doesn't mean it's not publicly enforced. And I'd like the police department to be educated on what that looks like so that when people are blocking that way and a truck can't get in there and turn around, that we can help people from now on. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me here today. First off, I want to say, Mark Maddox, thank you for the new roadways. They are very fantastic. Unfortunately, I'm here under a little bit different circumstances. I do have a copy for each of you guys there, and I'll just read it off here. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and members of the community. My name is Jared Kramer. I'm the co-owner of LoFi Cafe located right here in the Town of Paradise. I'm here today not on just behalf of my business, but on behalf of several small business owners who are facing serious financial hardship due to the ongoing road construction here on Paradise Roads. Two days, that was the notice we were given before construction began with this door hanger. We didn't have a formal meeting, no opportunity to prepare, and no meaningful phone calls about what was coming after a very slow summer of sales that we did prepare for and did not know this was coming. This construction follows years of disruptions from multiple utilities going underground and upgrades from PID. We've weathered those storms as best we could, hoping for a better future. But now, with this latest round of roadwork, we're in a crisis. At LoFi Cafe, we've seen a drop in sales between 45% and 75%, depending on the day. It's not a slump, it's a cliff. On top of that, dust clouds from construction mean we can't keep our doors open, which have spiked our energy costs due to running HVAC constantly. And because foot traffic is so low, our food waste has surged, adding insult to injury. And we're not alone. Dy hair salon has reported a 99% decrease in walk-in traffic, essentially a shutdown of their primary business model, one in the last three weeks. Pet groomers are seeing an appointment cancellations up over 350%. Pizza Factory has seen their midweek sales fall over 30%. Other retailers have told me they've had only one customer all of last week or significant drop-off in sales. This isn't sustainable. We're doing everything that we can to survive, but we're literally bleeding out. That's why I'm here to formally request that the Town of Paradise urgently establish a Paradise Road Rehabilitation Grant, a fund to help offset some of the loss of income, rising operational costs, and damages that we're enduring as a direct result of this construction. We understand the importance of the infrastructure upgrades. We appreciate them. But businesses, especially small, local businesses, shouldn't be collateral damage in the process. With a reasonable grant program, the town can help us stay afloat, keep people employed, ensure we're still standing when the dust literally settles. We're asking you to act urgently. Every day counts. Thank you for your time. Thank you for support. There's also about 14 to 16 other businesses that endorse this at the bottom of your page. Thank you.
Okay, I'm hearing impaired, so I don't know, am I speaking loud enough? Okay, so I really have to push my voice. Okay. Yeah. Three minutes. Okay. My main thing is, yeah, we had our campfire, we had COVID, we've had a lot of hard-hitting things. On top of it, yeah, on top of it, we have irresponsible people that have shattered our Mainly inspectors, the Town of Paradise inspectors. They're supposed to. California residential inspectors must uphold building codes. These codes are based on years of experience and protect the life, health, and property of the residents. Inspectors are the final check, the final check against dangerous construction. Okay? That's not what's happening here. Paradise is pushing growth. Right after my house is built, all through my house being built, I had to do emails and fight with the contractor, fight with the inspector. Right after I got a residential inspection out of Sacramento, he went thoroughly through my house. Then I went to the contractor's board, complete report there. Violations, they found violations, four violations against integrity builder Ken Flattin. Four violations. And this report, it's just not my fault. It is four houses, four houses accusation through the contractor's board to the Attorney General. That's pretty serious. Why? This is not the only one. You need to be held accountable. If it's, if it's the town manager that looks over these inspectors, if it's all of you that looks over the inspectors, we've got to go back to the beginning of, after the fire. Everybody needs to be held accountable. We need truth, honesty, and we need for all our residents to be safe. We need the relatives to make sure that we have competent people doing the home inspections. I want everybody in the Town of Paradise to be safe. Is that understood?
My name's Monica Huckrow. I am at 6224 Harvey Road. I appreciate your time. I'm happy the young lady came up and said what she just said because I think that everybody in this room knows we have a lot of problems, and I'm not going to point fingers. But I had a meeting with y'all on August 12th. Mr. Huber, you were there, Eric Reinbold, Mark Maddox, Steve Crowder, the mayor, Susan Hartman back there. And I brought up some very serious issues that I'm really angry and upset about, and I'm sick and tired of the BS, okay? I sat for an hour and a half. I talked to you guys, some of you, about the issues at my house regarding the building inspectors and overlooking the code enforcements and allowing my neighbor to damage my property severely. And I have people in this room who could testify to it two days because they've been there many times with me watching, okay? I followed up with a formal complaint on August 18th. Well, it went to Jim Goodwin, but he's gone now. So it went to the rest of you that were in the meeting, but not one person has responded to my formal complaint. And I want to understand, when you file a formal complaint with the Town of Paradise, what happens? I'm not going to read all of it because I'll run out of time, but I said this intentional and reckless failure from town officials who have these building departments in our community, have professional duties, they're responsible to the public here in this community, and it's not okay to be unethical. It's not okay. It's an outright abuse of power. I asked in my letter for an immediate and impartial investigation from an outside third-party independent body to investigate, and I talked about collusion and corruption in that meeting. I want immediate corrective action. Nothing's been done. I've asked for a site visit. I've asked a lot of you for a site visit. I've asked Tony Lindsey to come to my property and check out what's going on and all the damage, the septic issues, the sliding of the home into my yard, multiple violations, and I'm sick of it. I didn't get any response. Nobody's responded to the official complaint. How does it work? It's not against the police department right now, it's against the town officials. How does it work when somebody files a complaint? Did you get it, Mr. Crowder, Mr. Huber, Eric Reinbold, Mark Maddox? You're not really involved in this. Susan Hartman, Tony Lindsey, Tony Lindsey, who I have an issue with, who's colluding with the neighbor? My property's damaged, and I want somebody at my house to look at it. I want you in my driveway. Christina Deney have seen it, other people have seen it, but nobody from this town wants to come look at the problem. I put in a public records request. I want the meeting minutes from that, from that meeting that I had on August 12th. I haven't received any response yet. You guys, I mean, I'm just, the people that have talked at the last meeting and what's going on now, you guys need to be held accountable. Don't sit back. If you got bad apples and rotten apples, get rid of them and bring new people in.
Hi, my name, my name is Joseph Butts. I am a local framing contractor here in town, and I just wanted to come out and support the building department. I had numerous inspections with everyone, and I always found them to be the utmost integrity. So I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. Appreciate your time.
Hi, my name's Brandon Slater. Slater and Son Construction. Family's been doing construction business here in the North State for 75 years. We deal with a lot of different jurisdictions throughout the North State, doing inspections, anywhere from local, a lot of different local jurisdictions, as well as like the State Farm Marshal doing jail projects. We got Department of State Architects doing school projects. And I've, just this last year, we built two projects up here, two commercial projects up here in Paradise, a couple churches, and then one single-family residence. And, you know, I'm just here to share my experiences with working with the building department. I always found them to be very professional, knew what they were doing compared to other building departments, and certainly nothing ever shady was presented to me. And so from my perspective, I feel like they're doing their job. So it sounds like there's some other people that don't agree, but yeah, that's my perspective.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Sean Schingler. I'm a licensed general contractor living and working here in Paradise. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the recent decisions to place our building official and three inspectors on administrative leave. These individuals have been accused of taking money from builders to place inspections leading to poor-built homes. I want to be clear. I know these people personally. I know their character, their integrity, and their commitment to this community. They have worked tirelessly to help rebuild Paradise after the devastation we all endured. Their goal has always been to ensure that families can return to safe, high-quality homes. The council's actions, however, have created a ripple effect that goes far beyond these individuals. By making this move publicly, you've cast a shadow over the entire rebuilding process. You raised doubt in the minds of potential homeowners, investors, contractors about whether Paradise is a place they can trust. Over the past two weeks, I've had multiple contractors contact me frustrated because of these projects, of their projects, were delayed waiting for inspections. I personally have had that and contacted a number of you. And I'm not alone here. There have been countless conversations with contractors facing long delays, especially for final inspections. These are the inspections that allow families to move back into their homes. Every delay means another family waiting to return to Paradise. As a contractor, I can tell you firsthand, projects are stalled, homeowners are frustrated, and the message being sent to the outside world is that Paradise is unstable and plagued by corruption. That is not the Paradise I know, and it's not the Paradise you know. And it's not the message we want to be sending. I also want to remind the council that your role is to lead with fairness and facts, not emotion. Yes, there are poorly-built homes out there, but that is the responsibility of the builders who cut corners, not the inspectors who have upheld the code and word, and worked to protect this community. Now, I believe there is ways to resolve these issues and prevent them from happening again, but it will take collaboration between the town and building industry to create solutions that work. Together, we can develop processes and safeguards, not only to protect Paradise, but also to serve as a model for other communities. Paradise has a responsibility to lead the way for, for towns that will face similar challenges after disasters. Let's be on the forefront of creating systems and mitigate these problems statewide. We have an opportunity to turn this situation into something positive by showing a leadership and innovation. Paradise has come too far to let fear and speculation derail our future. I urge this council to act swiftly, not only to complete a fair and transparent investigation, but to reinstate our building officials and inspectors immediately. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Wolfe. Been a resident of Paradise for 40 years. Like most of us, our house burnt down through the fire. We did rebuild, and we're standing in Paradise for who knows how long, until I die, anyway. My career has been, I was working for commercial contractors and built hospitals, medical centers. The medical, or medical center at the edge of town, I built that. Built the cancer center at the Feather River Hospital. I've done countless OSHPA jobs for Feather River Hospital and others in the North State. After the fire, I decided to retire from commercial work. I was approached by a contractor that's been in business in Paradise longer than I've lived in Paradise, so a long time. They asked me if I'd want to come to work. Let's be on the forefront of creating systems and mitigate these problems statewide. We have an opportunity to turn this situation into something positive by showing a leadership and innovation. Paradise has come too far to let fear and speculation derail our future. I urge this council to act swiftly, not only to complete a fair and transparent investigation, but to reinstate our building officials and inspectors immediately. Thank you.
John Wolf?
Hello, I'm John Wolf. Been a resident of Paradise for 40 years. Like most of us, our house burnt down through the fire. We did rebuild, and we're standing in Paradise for who knows how long, until I die, anyway. My career has been, I was working for commercial contractors and built hospitals, medical centers. The medical, or medical center at the edge of town, I built that. Built the cancer center at the Feather River Hospital. I've done countless OSHPOD jobs for Feather River Hospital and others in the North State. After the fire, I decided to retire from commercial work. I was approached by a contractor that's been in business in Paradise longer than I've lived in Paradise. So, a long time. They asked me if I'd want to come to work for them. I said, "I would love to." Started working for them and worked on several houses and worked closely with the building department. One inspector that I'd like to talk about is Fran Moreau. Fran does the final inspections for most of the jobs. Fran handles her inspections the same way OSHPOD handles their inspections, which is very high caliber. She does, she is very knowledgeable about the building codes. I've questioned her on codes in the past. She'll usually send me the code by the end of that day. She's that thorough. Fran does inspections the same way every time, so she never misses anything on final inspections. Fran is so much above reproach, it's unbelievable. When the building department adds new requirements, she gives the requirements to me in writing. I think the newest one is the subcontractors list. I've had to do that for 40 years. I think it's a great thing, getting the contractors list. You know, Fran is a very good inspector. It's an injustice by those that are complaining about her. I'm sure that once this costly investigation is done, the town will find her innocent of any of the charges. I believe you're going to find that with the whole building department personally. Hopefully, I'll get to this. The investigation against the building department is a waste of town funds. While the inspections are under investigation, it's slowing down inspections. Has the council considered, while, while these inspections are being done, our inspectors could be looking for other jobs, and we won't have them back? Thank you for your time.
Amy Rohr?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Amy Rohr, many of you know me as the executive director of Valley Contractors Exchange, which is not who I'm addressing you tonight. All I've been to say, VCE is a nonprofit construction association, and my heart truly goes out to everybody that's experiencing construction defects, and we can be a resource to help navigate that process. But in addition to that role, I am the licensed general contractor. Done several projects up here, just finalized our first spec home, which is an interesting experience. I'm also a member of the Sierra, Sierra Casc- Shasta Cascade chapter of the International Code Council, which is a bunch of, majority of the members are building officials and plans examiners through the North States because I love geeking out on building codes. So through, through my work as a general contractor, through that organization, through VCE, I've known most of the building inspectors and plan check officials throughout Butte and Glen County. And I will tell you, even though it's not popular, I will tell you, the Town of Paradise Building Department sets the gold standard. I look forward to working here. And that wasn't always in the case. In February of 2020, I had to arrange a meeting along with the Rebuild Paradise Foundation, with Fourleaf, who at the time was contracting with the town to provide permitting and inspection services. We had to get a bunch of contractors, architects, engineers, together in a room and sit down and talk about how we can remove the roadblocks and inconsistent and delayed building inspections. And while it helped a little bit, it truly didn't help until Tony came back and built his team back up. And since then, it's been pretty seamless. So several people have spoken to a builder's inspector's job, and they're right. Their duty is to make sure that the job is being done to code, ensuring code compliance and per the plan submitted. They cannot evaluate craftsmanship of the build, nor they can, nor can they comment if they, if they suspect inferior craftsmanship. So they're between a rock and a hard place. And I think the other thing people would need to know is that things change after they leave. Not all, not all the contractors out there are going to leave those arc breaker, deep breakers in there because they're expensive. So things change after they leave, so, and things get covered up, and you don't know what's under there. And that's not the building inspector's fault. They, these people are people of integrity. I will also just tell you, I feel like a lot of this should be addressed on a statewide issue. It should be a legislative issue. Yes, absolutely, owner, builders, nonlicensed contractors are a problem. We shouldn't allow LLCs to be owner builders. There's no reason for them to be doing that. We should limit the owner builders and LLCs' ability to do projects in disaster-affected areas. I would encourage you to champion some legislation on a statewide level that would address this in a meaningful way, rather than making the building department a scapegoat for things that have happened over the past seven years. That's my comment. Thank you for your time.
Christine Neuer?
Hello. Hi, my name is Christine Neuer. And of course, I'm from the Faroe, just like everybody. My house burned down, and I had a bad contractor who abandoned my house, and I had to turn them into the Contractor State License Board, which was a huge nightmare since I was dealing with everything all by myself. And I, throughout the construction, I moved 18 times, and so I wasn't around here. My neighbors would always tell me if the, if my contractor was at my house and not, and most of the time, he wasn't. But fast forwarding to when it was time to do, like, rough inspections, I, I have a lot of problems with my house right now with plumbing, unfortunately. And I've had five plumbers at my house already, licensed plumbers, some of whom you guys know, who are personal friends of mine. And the thing is, is that the plumbing should not have been inspected, that it was passing rough plumbing, and it shouldn't have been because I have, like, in my kitchen, my first bathroom, my master bathroom, I have tons of problems with all of them. And what I was told is that certain things should have not been inspected. I was told by the Resiliency Center that Fourleaf inspections were out of my house. And I was told to call the owner there because it was their problem. It was their problem for inspecting my house wrong. And basically, they hung up on me, hung up the phone on me. And, and since that happened, there's been a lot of other things. But like my, my bathroom didn't have a vent port in it, and so my master bathroom toilet never worked. And I had my painter open up my garage and that, and there was no vent in the wall, I mean, or hookup. And then I have spigots on the outside of my house that you would think would have running water coming out of them, and they don't. So they're in the outside of my house, but you turn them on, there's no water, and that should have been part of a final inspection. I mean, not a final, excuse me, before my house continued on construction. I'm sorry. So what I've been told is that certain, okay, well, can I just say one more thing? So what I've been told is that things should have not even passed rough plumbing by these Fourleaf inspectors, and they were. And construction went on, and now I have this big, huge problem that should not be my responsibility, the homeowner. And I need to find out what can be done about that because it's not right that certain things that I'm told by plumbing contractors have said. I have statements. I didn't bring them with me because this is the first time I've ever been to a council meeting. But they said that I, that it should never have passed rough plumbing because I'm on a solid slab and all my plumbing's underneath, and there's major problems to just get things corrected. And I need to find out what can be done about that because this should not be the responsibility of me because I had, I did nothing wrong. I just had these bad inspectors, and it should not have been. And a couple of them, Scott Rice from Four Our Plumbing, I've known him for about 25, 30 years, who lives in Durham. And he came out to my house and wrote up a statement to let you guys know. And Scotty's all these people, and they just said, "It's absolutely insane." They said, "To just fix my kitchen sink, that my whole kitchen floor is going to have to be torn out to fix my bathroom, my master bath." The cement, the, the found, the, the cement out and out part of it is all going to have to be jackhammered out for it to be finished. I'm sorry? I need to what? Oh, I'm out of town. Well, anyhow, I would like to see when I can talk to somebody about what can be done about these bad inspectors that inspected my house, if you never did that.
You're welcome to submit any paperwork you have or anything you'd like us to see to the, to the town clerk at the office right there as you walk in the front door on the left-hand side, and we'll make sure we review.
Yeah, because it's a real problem. I mean, these, these plumbers said that's not even up to code. So.
Thank you.
They said, "What's the point of, like, when you do an inspection, if it's not done properly, when the, the building shouldn't be continued on?" And it was. Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Autumn Field?
No, stay. Good evening, council members. My name is Autumn, and I want to thank the Town of Paradise for initiating the investigation into the building department. And I appreciate the support from the District Attorney's Office in that measure. As a resident, I urge you, council, to continue supporting this process and to commit to full transparency and sharing the findings. Transparency is essential in restoration and maintenance of the trust as we rebuild this town. I also respectfully ask the council to consider any potential conflicts of interest related to this matter. Ensuring impartiality through recusal, if necessary, will help maintain public confidence in the process and in our leadership. Thank you again for what you're doing. It's very much appreciated.
Ken Klassen?
Good evening. My name's Ken Klassen. I live at 5499, excuse me, Harrison Road.
Can't hear you.
I live at 5499 Harrison Road. And what I want to talk about tonight is the Fire Victims Trust and its effect on the citizens of Paradise that the council represents. And I know it's going to be a little bit uncomfortable, but it's something we need to face up to. Back in 2022, the mayor and Congressman Lamolfe went and they lobbied about the tax issue that we were facing, and they were very successful in returning 30% of our money to us that we were going to get from the trust. And the mayor at that time, actually, I found a historical article where he said, "Right now, the trust has paid us 40%. If we, if some of us are paying 30% to our attorney, our net benefit is 10%." But we're faced with that again right now, the 30%. It's the same dollar factor. The trust is going to pay 70%, we hope. They pay 70%, and then we pay our attorney 30%. We're going to net 40% is what we're going to net. So I think it's time that the council exercises some political power and author, compile a document putting pressure on PG&E, the Fire Victims Trust, and the U.S. Bankruptcy Court and Judge Montali in San Francisco. Pardon me? Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. You know, when we had our determination notices, there was no disclaimer on those determination notices. We thought those were contracts. We were going to get 100% of that money. It was written by, excuse me, attorneys, and common people cannot understand it. 52 months after those determination notices were signed is when the first inkling that you were not going to be getting 100% came out from Kathy Annie. Kathy Annie said, "No one should have expected in getting 100%." Side issue, I left with the clerk a document for all of you because I can't get this all in three minutes to you. But she came out 52 months later and said, on a, on a website that probably most of us don't even know exists, that you shouldn't have expected to get 100%. Well, how, how can people, why did they send it out without a disclaimer if that was the case? She should have, at that point, went back to the bankruptcy court and renegotiated that bankruptcy. PG&E and the Fire Victims Trust and the bankruptcy court should have never taken the administrative costs of $1,250 an hour out of the money that was due the fire victims. That money should have been paid on a separate side by PG&E. In 2023 and 2024, PG&E had record profits. Record profits. In 2020, they went bankruptcy. How did they recover so quickly to get $2.87 billion profits in 2024? I have a lot more to say, which I can't get to, obviously, my time's up. But I, I ask you to look at the documents that I left for you. Agenda, and put on your agenda next meeting for you to compile a document. I gave you lots of factual information in there. I've done a lot of research. I'm not done with this. You know, I'm going to go to, to the county, the Butte County Board of Supervisors. I've talked to Congressman Lamolfe already, and I'm going to end up at the U.S. Attorney's Office because I think there's so much mismanagement. And I spent my career in law enforcement, 38 years. And I, please look at the document I compiled for you. Come back with an agenda item next week saying that they need to take care of the people you represent. They need to take care of the Town of Paradise. And I'm going to quickly say this. When Robert Johnson pled guilty to 84 counts of voluntary manslaughter, he said to that court that he was going to make all the fire victims whole and fair, treated fair and whole. And they released a PG&E press release, which is in the documents I'm giving you. And he said, "All the campfire victims had been paid." So that's the kind of stuff that's there. You need to read it, and hopefully, you'll find a judgment like I did. If you want to talk to me, my number's on there.
Ms. T. Wright?
Hello, good evening, Mayor Crowder and council members. My name is Ms. T. Wright. I am the Director of Butte County Library. And I just wanted to come to your council meeting. I didn't realize it was going to be so busy tonight. But I wanted to come to your council meeting and talk about some exciting things we have going on at the library this month for September. September is always National Library Card Sign-up Month. So that is a time when we like to encourage people to come and get their library cards, to come back to the library if they haven't been there. And this year, the Board of Supervisors were so generous, and they let us have a fine amnesty month for September. So what that means is that anybody can come and get any of their fines waived on their library account. I know there are people who haven't been to the library for years because maybe they forgot to bring their books back or they lost their books. And we would like to welcome you guys back with open arms. Just come into the library, call the library, email the library, send us a DM on social media and let us know, and we will waive your fines. And then, moving forward, we will be fine-free, which means that there will be no more overdue fees per day. Certainly, you can't keep the books after a certain amount of time. If you don't return your books, we will be sending out notices for lost fees. But then, as soon as you bring those books back, those fees will be wiped off. So we know that fines are a barrier of access. We don't like to collect fines. I hope nobody thinks that the library likes to collect fines. We're all about providing resources for all of the communities. So please tell all your constituents. I'm glad there is kind of a large group here so they can go and spread the word in the community. But this is something that we're super excited about. Started September 1st, and we've already waived quite a lot of fines and fees, and we've still got three weeks left. So we'd love to waive a lot more. Thank you so much for your time.
Sarah Blain?
So, as you can see, the town really wants the audit, but I'll get to that in a second. So I forwarded an email to you guys yesterday. I work at night, have a lot of kids, sorry if you're getting all these late emails, from Senator Dolly's office regarding the $50 billion, and I was hoping that that is something that can be considered. There was a link in the, in that email that is a survey that I believe it ends on Friday, so it is pretty urgent if you guys can look at that and discuss it, because I think getting part of that money, part of the pie for up here for healthcare services is greatly needed. And I know you guys have been waiting on some things moving forward, but, and then I did have a question that just came up because of somebody else's comment. I believe his name is Sean Shingler, forgive me if I didn't write that down correctly, Licensed General Contractor Trilogy. He seems to have information on a closed session. I don't know if anyone else caught that, but how does he have information on a closed session about the building department being on leave and all of that kind of things? My thing, in my brief, brief looking into it today, as I emailed you guys earlier on the 700 form, Form 700, I believe he's wearing a Trilogy Construction shirt, which belongs to Mr. Boland. I don't know if that correlates to each other, but going along with the transparency and lack of trust on the town, I think this needs to be addressed rather rapidly. That is quite concerning, that somebody who's coming here.
I heard you that from.
Okay, I'm still talking.
No, I'm accusing someone, and I asked directly, why are you fired?
Let her, let her finish.
It was a question, but thank you. I said it needs to be discussed. There was none of that. But anyways, I would like to know how someone in the general population had information on that. I think that is something that needs to be addressed, because I was not aware of it, and I have been in contact with all of you guys, as all your emails show. I've been asking questions. You even responded to me. Thank you so much. But that is not okay. And whether it is from somebody on the council, or maybe the people that are on leave, maybe they're the ones doing it. I'm sure they were told not to. It needs to be addressed, and so I am asking that that gets addressed. Thank you.
Sorry. Let me get out. Howdy. Hi, everybody. Carrie Max here. I'm really proud of my town for speaking up for themselves in every area that we need to talk about, because that's how we trust each other, and that's how we grow with each other, and that's how we become a really good team. I'm really proud of my town right now. It's really uncomfortable, I know that. That's how you get through it, right? You walk through it. I'm finally getting to open my business. I've been paying rent now for over three and a half years at that little nook at where True Value is. Paradise Reflections is opening Thursday evening. I'm having my ribbon cutting, and I just wanted to thank the town for helping me make that happen and helping me walk through that and helping me come out of isolation from what this fire and lack of payment from PG&E has done to me. And I just love my town, and I love everybody in it. And so, so I open on Thursday, so come, oh, so I'm selling, I'm making Creations Garden Art, and I have five other artist friends that are selling their work. I'm serving food from Green Paradise, and, and it's a really cool drive-up thing, so, and it's going to morph. Like, I haven't had the money to make it exactly what I've wanted it to be when I open, but that'll morph too, because my town's going to tell me what it needs and wants. I can't wait to hear, and I can't wait to connect with my town. So thanks for my three minutes. Thank you very much.
Rhonda Burnte Panara.
I'm here not just to speak to the council, but also to the members of the public that are all here. I think one of the things that we're learning from this meeting tonight is that we need collaboration and not accusation. I'm a fourth-generation Paradise resident, and I too suffered the trauma of losing my home, so I do not take this lightly. Since the fire, I have been working with towns and municipalities all over the North State in the Dune job I have as a permit facilitator. And so I've had the opportunity to work with building inspectors, building officials, and building departments all over, not just in Paradise. And in rebuilding my own homes in Paradise, I've worked closely with the Town of Paradise as well as in my job. I've observed Tony Lindsey multiple times in the Town of Paradise, very professionally listening to the citizens, who do not always understand that there is not just one answer. There's not just one person you can point the finger at. There are times when I'm sure he would have liked to have helped someone more than he could, but their jobs make them have to be impartial. And I'm not saying that there aren't mistakes made. We are all human. But I've always found Tony Lindsey to be fair, even when I didn't agree with him. Fran, Fran Morrow is the best inspector I have ever encountered in any city, town, county. She is fair, knowledgeable, and she does not speak if she does not know. She says, I will find the answer, and she gives it to you in writing. And if you have made a mistake, she does not take it personally. She does not think you're trying to get around her. She tries to help you understand what you need to do to come into compliance. I've had not the same experience with Four Leaf, and I've had not the same experience with the people that we're now paying to ineffectually do inspections. I'm sorry, just because you have a certification doesn't mean you know what you're talking about. So I feel one of the problems is we're now sitting around here pointing fingers at each other. I understand trauma. I understand PTSD. I too have that. So I do not take it lightly that your homes were not built to your standard, that there are problems. But the problem is, when one contractor, when they're now vilifying all contractors, no one, no one is going to want to help make that house whole, because then they take on all that liability for a home they did not build. So the only way we can become a town and keep growing is to come together and stop blaming, but start finding solutions. Yes, you have suffered financial losses. We have all suffered financial losses, and we will never be made whole.
I am here this week to actually ask for you to expand the scope of the audit that's being done for the building department. I actually really love our building department. I've worked with a lot of them, and I think they're, they're wonderful. Sorry. I'm shy. I really like our building department. I think that they're wonderful people, and they're trying to do the right things. I don't know if they have the resources to do the right things necessarily, but I found separate from, separate from the building that was going on, I was one of the weed abatement contractors that was hired in December for the big weed abatement program for the lots that were not compliant. The building department was also, and code enforcement, was responsible for, for that program as well. And in the meeting that all of the contractors came to, we were told by a couple of folks from the town that you don't have to have a license to do weed abatement in the Town of Paradise. There are legal rules and thresholds. If you don't charge over a certain amount, you don't need a contractor's license. We all know those things. But there are some folks who are operating under an exemption and running their entire business based on an exemption that indicates that if they're doing fire abatement work, they do not need a contractor's license. And they're unscrupulous. They're folks that aren't doing right by people. They're, they're polluting properties around town. They're, they're not following the rules. Their list is so long. They're telling folks that they will finish a property before fines happen. They're not getting there. The fines are happening. And they're bidding against legitimate contractors. I was awarded a zone in this weed abatement program on a non-competitive basis. So we give bids for all of the lots in our zone, and we get those jobs unless they're outrageously priced. And then the town comes back to us and we negotiate, and if we can't reach a solution, we, they can go out to bid for competitive bids. This was the program that we signed up for. I submitted a bid on a property that was ridiculous, and my price was reasonable, I felt like, for my operating costs. Within an hour of submitting my bid, an unlicensed contractor was awarded my job. I threw a fit, obviously. I had meetings, I got apologies, but I was told since a competitive bid was received, I had to beat that bid. This contractor was going around town telling folks that I was price gouging people, which everybody, everybody knows me, and I don't do that. They were telling folks that they will do whatever it takes to undercut the legitimate contractors in town in order to stay busy and still have their crew in the spring. I would like that process to be looked at and for the town to not work with unlicensed contractors going forward, exemption or not. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Crowder and council members. I'm Lori Noble from Noble Orchard Company. Since 1902, I've resided in Paradise. 81 years before that, Noble Orchard opened in 1921. The rebuild is finally moving forward for our farm. The 4,000-square-foot storage and packing facility, a separate building, are in sight. Many know we are able to retain, we were able to retain and rebuild the stone building, thus hanging on to the history that Grandpa Noble had, Perry Noble had built somewhere around 1949. Additionally, our stone rock wall fronting Pence Road is mostly intact, except damage that was caused by a subcontractor for a utility protecting their power lines. A burnt tree was removed, and it crashed into the, the wall, causing extensive damage. That remains to be repaired. Did the Fire Victims' Trust cover that? You would never know it by finding, by the settlements that we received. Couldn't tell what was covered. We have concerns about the rebuild that continue. Are there going to be requirements for landscaping of a farm? ADA, yes. I was told by a prior town manager, we are grandfathered in as a business, a farm business in Paradise. The town is 46 years old this year. This is the 105th year for Noble Orchard Company. We appreciate all that you have done, your support and the endeavor to rebuild our farm is continuing. It is not a commercial rebuild. It is a farm, and we hope to be able to develop it as such. Thank you very much.
I have no more cards for public comment.
So with that, we're going to move on to a public hearing. So conduct a duly notice and publish public hearing. Concur with Project Secula determination, and Susan Hartman.
Good evening, Mayor Crowder and council. So this item is about temporary use regulations and how they pertain to lay-down yards specifically for work happening in public and private rights-of-way. Oh, I need a clicker. So right now, there's temporary use regulations that live in two different places in the municipal code. One is in Title 17, the zoning regs, and those have been around since the late 90s. And that's where you'll find the temporary use permit requirements, if you want to have a storage yard, job trailer on the site of your construction activity, right? It needs to be on the same property. And then in Title 8, we have an urgency ordinance that's been around for just over two years now, and that's what allowed these same kind of job trailers, storage yards for when property's happening in the right-of-way, because you couldn't do storage there, so we allowed temporarily an off-site storage yard. So under that urgency ordinance, which is slated to expire at the end of this year, we've permitted 62 temporary use permits under that for these off-site storage yards. It's been benefiting the subconsultants of PG&E, PID, as well as the town for our paving contractors. And then actually connecting with these different companies and what their schedules look like, PG&E still has work at least until the end of '26, PID till the end of '28, and the town, just for the paving projects, end of '28, but with the sewer, we could be looking even longer than that. So how is the urgency ordinance different than the just normal zoning ordinance for these storage yards? Under the urgency ordinance, you can do an off-site storage yard. Under the regular zoning ordinance, right, it has to be on the site where you're doing construction. Under the urgency ordinance, if you are doing a storage yard on residential property, it requires a higher level of permit than a temporary use permit, and we need to send out a notice to all the neighbors, giving them 10 days to request a public hearing. And that's because this urgency ordinance came about as a request from PG&E to have the ability to have some closer storage yards to where they were working on, but we were also getting complaints from residential neighbors, because these contractors, I know you've heard about it and you've seen it, where they were just finding vacant lots, setting up shop with or without the owner's permission, and it was causing some conflicts with standing homes nearby. So we go through this urgency ordinance process, and we did special provisions for the residential neighborhoods to help address those conflicts we were having, and that's why there's that 10-day noticing. Under the regular zoning ordinance, we don't have that. We just issue it. There's still conditions you have to comply with, and of course, the neighbors can let us know if there's problems, and we can reach out to the applicant to get those resolved. So the proposed amendments before the council tonight is because the urgency ordinance is slated to expire in a couple of months, and we know we still have years ahead of us where we really need to utilize that ability for off-site storage. And talking with the attorney, it's not really an urgency ordinance at this point. We really just need to embed this option in our regular zoning amendments under the temporary use regulations. So we'd like to just move it out of urgency, put it into the regular, so it's available anytime somebody's working in private or public rights-of-way. We'd like to carry over the special permit conditions that were talked about in the urgency ordinance, and those are in your draft ordinance, and just bring those over. But we do want to, or we would request that that 10-day notification and the requirement for a higher-level permit when you're in a residential neighborhood be removed, because in the two years we've been doing this now, there's been no request for the public hearing, so it's time and money on the applicant, and because we have that pretty extensive list of things those contractors have to do, primarily about putting the sign up, about who's responsible for that job site, that alone seems to have alleviated the conflicts. So now the neighbors have somebody to call, and they're resolving any of those issues. So it hasn't risen to that level yet. So it just didn't seem to warrant the additional money and time to get those yards placed. And so the council action requested tonight is to conduct the public hearing and then introduce that ordinance that would move that provision from urgency into the temporary use regulations and the regular zoning ordinance, where it will live into perpetuity. Any questions?
So you know, I was, I was the one that brought this up back.
Yeah, with PG&E, yep.
Beginning, right?
Yep.
So, you know, I, I like it and all that. The stipulations we put on it?
Mm-hmm.
They haven't done a good job with that.
Which stipulations?
Once in a while, they'll put a sign up, put their name and a phone number, once in a while. Most of them do not.
If.
The, the, the flagging around the septic tank, rarely if ever I see that. I mean, I. I mean, I haven't... Now, there could possibly be no septic tank there. Doubt it. Haven't run across a lot that didn't have a septic tank, but could be. But don't see that. Don't see anything. We talked about the leach lines also having a no loading zone area. There's those things that we put in place, dust control, having water trucks go through there. I'm around this town all day long. I just, I circle the town. I'm from job to job, and I just see a lot of that stuff not happening, and that bothers me. I mean, I want this. I think we need this.
So, either, and I know that there's still yards that are being set up without our knowledge, because we actually, before we issue, we actually send people out to go look, to make sure there's a sign, and to make sure either the septic is somehow blocked off, either with materials or cones. But I won't deny that there's not yards that still escape the permitting process, or that stuff gets taken down later on, but we make it part of our process to go out in the field and look.
Yeah, and I'll also say this, especially with the road crews. And I, man, I sound like a little pain in the butt, but... And I get it. You've got to have a place to park. But many times, if they would just ask, if they would just say, "Is it okay if our workers just park their cars there?", most people would not have even a problem with that.
Right.
But there's not even the question. They just, boom, 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 the cars are in there, and there's no regard for what they're doing or anything. It just happens. So, I'm for this. I'm just, we need to find a way to make sure they're living up to what we asked them to do. And I don't think they're excessive. I really don't. I don't think they're bad.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. And if it means that we end up just scheduling inspections on some of, like, code enforcement's route, like, we just take the ones we know are still active, and we're just doing more frequent inspections?
I would appreciate that if we could. I think that's something that is important.
And I kind of am seeing the same thing as Greg. It would be nice to have them at least ask people if they're going to park on...
On vacant lots?
Yeah, and worse is they're parking, you know, big trucks with heavy equipment on there, and they're tearing up, you know, gravel, dirt, whatever, and they just are kind of doing that at will. And I mean, I'm still seeing that a lot.
It happens. It's weird. You know, we saw the evidence tonight. There are a lot of people still sensitive about the fire. I am. I was talking to a guy Sunday about it. I was tearing up. I mean, it still hits you. I get it. Some people with their lots, there's one thing on that lot that their dad planted, that they have tried to protect. Nobody knows about that but them. And then, someone comes in there and does something. So, that's where it's important, I think.
My concern is...
Yes.
Okay, I understand the money-saving to the applicant. Like, everybody that wants to do this on a private property, like, you know who the property owner is, and they've gotten permission. That's how they get the permit. But why don't we want to let neighbors know? I mean, I don't know about having a public hearing, but I think there should be a notice, because there's a lot of them that were the lots. There's no signage. You know, they're just there, suddenly overnight, you know? I mean, you know, I don't know. I mean, it would be nice to know that, gee, there's going to be a construction yard next door to me for the next...
But if nobody shows up, I mean, if nobody ever comes to them, you know, I get it. Is it really worth the time to go through all that? So, I get it.
Yeah, but it's, yeah. I mean, if there's no sign, then there's nobody to call and complain, "Hey, your guys are leaving trash", or whatever.
Trash, right.
You know? I mean, I had the guys that are doing marking the thing, right?
Oh, for USA?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Two trucks pulled onto my daughter's property, and they said, "Oh, it's a vacant lot." So, now there's a fence up, a wire up, and a no trespass. And I called their company and gave them the truck numbers and said, "This is not okay", and nobody asks. I mean, that's the thing. They don't ask. So, maybe we need to do a better educational thing with all of these subcontractors that are in our town, no matter who they are, and let them know, like, you know, "You better talk to the people before you show up in your yard."
Yes.
I just wanted to add that I do like this idea, and I can only speak from my limited experience and my little flight pattern in my vicinity, but the lay-down yards that have been in my neighborhood, they have made personal contact. They've come and met with me and explained everything, made sure I had their card, and it was, I think it was PG&E and Tykert, and had their big old signs out, you know? So, some of them are, I believe, kind of fitting into the rules and doing it, but I'm sure there's always somebody that's outside of the lines.
That struggles with it, right.
Yeah.
And I see Nick Tovar sign out there. He's out there, and that's PG&E, but then they have subcontractors that don't necessarily fall through. Anyway, cards?
Any more questions for Susan before we move? Okay, cards?
Are you opening the public hearing?
Oh, that's right. That's right.
So, 7:50, we're going to open up the public meeting.
I have no cards on this side.
Anybody wish to speak on it?
On this item? I'm sorry.
I just think with a 10-day notice, that you're not getting complaints or people, because they got informed. I like knowing, because they start really early in the morning, and I like knowing that's going to happen. And you're right about that one little bush that belonged to Uncle Mac. I mean, our little lot is still so precious, so I just agree with all that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, no other public comment?
Was that for this one? Did he put a card in for this one?
Not for this item.
Oh.
Okay, so, at 7:52, we're going to close public comment.
I move approval. What number is it? Ordinance number what?
649.
Second.
Motion by Bullen, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bullen?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
So, council consideration, 6A, review and file the fourth-quarter investment report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Amy?
Good evening, council. Today, I'm bringing before you the review and file the fourth-quarter investment report for fiscal year ending June 30 of 2025. We had a pretty good year this last year. Our fourth quarter ended with $1,073,915 for the overall of $4,163,000 and change. As you know, we have many different avenues for investments. Predominantly, meter handles the largest amount of our items, and so there's a rolling five-year allocation, so no investments exceed that five-year timeframe. We also utilize class for cash flow, as well as tri-counties investment, so, as well as LEAF as well. So, we have a multitude of different areas. Predominantly, class, tri-counties, and LEAF, we use for cash flows in order to fund things such as our road rehab in a lot of different areas. So, what we are looking for today is file and approve our investments for fourth quarter. Any questions?
Questions for Amy?
When do they come and talk to us again about, I mean, future? Obviously, now's the great time to secure some long-term.
Right. Well, actually, a few months ago is really the better term.
Yes, it's true.
So, it fluctuates, as you know. Jim will probably be here at the beginning, or the, once we close the next quarter.
End of third quarter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, he'll come in and do the presentation for you.
Okay, thank you.
If you want him before then, I can always call and...
No, 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 no. No, those are usually long, but it's, no, it's just good to hear. And I know things are starting to change, and we're going to be...
Sure, so...
Interest rates will go down.
And we have been utilizing more cash flow in order to make these large items come through. You'll see in our check runs that have been presented, our expenses have gone up tremendously because of the road payments that we have. So, you'll see that we utilize a lot more cash flow from, say, May through December, because that's the timeframe that we're utilizing the roads. And then during the winter months, you wait a couple of months for that, and you'll see that there's that dip and lull. So, it's definitely on a cycle of when we use our cash flow. And then, with this, so in the next season, you'll see, or quarter, you'll see a dramatic dip, because as Mark has alluded to before, and so if I were, we're doing about 40 miles this year, and so that's a lot of road payments that we're doing. And so FEMA backfills that, and it takes a lot of paperwork and a lot of time and a lot of approval processes in order to get reimbursed. So, those have been a priority for my department, as well as all the other departments, to get the reimbursements back. But it really utilizes a lot of cash flow in order to make all these things happen.
So, do we have to pay the subcontractor before, or the contractor, before they, we get reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay.
And we actually have to show that they cashed the check. It's not, we can't even file it. The day that we actually cut the check, we have to show payment.
They've accepted it and...
Yeah, so, a lot of these, we're trying to push through monthly, but some of them are quarterly, depending on the ebbs and flows. So, we're dealing with Caltrans, we're dealing with FEMA, all these different areas that Mark and his team have, you know, had really good relationships in order to get this funding.
Okay, good.
Any other questions for Amy?
We can go forward though, can't we?
Yeah.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Bullen, seconded by LaSalle. Councilmember Bullen?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton is absent. Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
See, we don't need him.
Case 6B, approved cost of services, study report prepared by Matrix Consulting Group. Amy?
It's a pleasure to see you again. We have approved the cost of services fee that we, study that we did last month, or last month, we presented the study. You guys had a chance to absorb it, think about it. And what this study is doing is allowing the documentation to say what all of these fees cost, because the fees can't exceed the actual cost of the town. So, by establishing the costs of these actual fees for the different services, we can establish a new fee schedule later, as we deem appropriate for our community. In order to take care of this process, we have to do the study, which we did, and we also have to approve the actual study. So, that's what we're bringing forth tonight, is the approval of the study. Any questions?
I have one. So, when we do this study, like, right now, we have a larger town staff than what normally we have, because of all the money, all the projects, all the additional personnel we need to do all the things we're doing. So, I think I read in there, like, so is there any part of that that changes the cost? You know what I mean? Because we have a bigger, we have a larger fleet, we have more people and stuff. I mean, I understand, like, a particular task to animal control, or whatever it might be. Here's the cost of how much time it takes that person at that pay scale. You know what I mean?
So, to give you an example...
Because some of that's going to change.
Sure. So, to give you an example, Woody is going to do a fee for animal control. They're going to look at what it costs for that position to go in. They look at the time it takes for them to do that, based off their hourly rate and the statutory duties that go along with it. And then they look at also some of the overhead that trickles into it as well, and that's how they allocate the time of what it costs. Now, this was done in the prior year, so there has been cost escalation and things, but it's based off the numbers that they were given at that point in time. So, it's not an arbitrary. They took and looked at the actual time that the people are taking, as well as the overhead. So, that's how they are building the cost for these items. Is that answering your question?
Yeah, I think what I was looking at that caused the question in my head was, like, the overhead cost. Like, in other words, you know, if I have a department that suddenly has 10 vehicles in it, that's factored in, even though one person's using one vehicle to do a task.
Some of the overhead is, so...
You know what I mean?
Yeah, so like, post-employment, you know, the finance, you know, their allocation towards doing some of these items, yes, technology that goes into it. So, they look at the different departments, because, you know, everybody looks at finance and says, "Well, they don't make money. They're just over there pushing paper", but there's a cost associated with it.
Sure.
Because we support all the different departments. So, there is an overhead factor that gets applied to it, if that's what you're asking.
Kind of. Thanks.
I think what Woody might be asking, and I had a similar question, is, you know, we're looking at this report, and it indicates that building is recovering 84% based on their current volume and their current staffing, their current operations. Let's say hypothetically that we do increase the fees to negate that. And then, in five years or 10 years, our volume goes way down, our staffing needs go way down, and then you mentioned that we can't, we can't charge more than what would equate to 100% of the department costs. Does it then get reassessed and drop the fees down?
So, it's based off of the timeframe at that point that they do the study, and how long it takes for the staff to address those needs at that time. You can put a cost multiplier, so it would say there's COLAs and different things, and you can go with CPI, and it can escalate in five years. We would then have the option to do another study to re-benchmark where things are. So, that might be a re-benchmarking at that time. Right now, we know that we are dealing with things that are not the norm on the baseline, and so we know some of those things might take a little bit of extra time. The study does compare to other communities to give you an idea of where our benchmark is compared to other ones, and most of the other ones have re-benchmarked or set their fees in 2024. Ours haven't been done since 2017.
Seventeen, yeah.
So, I mean, we've been given a lot of room for things to not escalate, but I see what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. So, if we feel that they are maybe over what it should be, we could always redo another study to assess where we are at that point in time.
But if staff goes down, that means volume's gone down, which means income's gone down.
And so, it should evolve with that.
Yeah, right. So, you know, they should, you know, walk together as things progress throughout the years. But in theory, it should take the same amount of time to do the same fee, or, you know, to provide a license or a different thing.
And wages are going to go up between now and then, so...
Right.
It's not going to get cheaper.
It may shake out anyway.
But like you said, the last time we did a benchmark was 2017. So, in 2017, we were building six houses a year, you know? Now, we're doing 300.
The scope of work is definitely different.
Huh?
The scope of work is definitely different than where we were.
And wages are different.
Right.
For sure.
So, Amy, we've had eight years, and we've had escalation, and so we're falling behind of what the actual costs are. What's the next step after we approve this? When do you bring back recommendations? Are you expecting us to, say, set a goal? What happens after this is approved, to say, it does get approved today?
So, we look at the suggested rates that they give us, and we meet with the different directors, and we assess where we think we should be. Now, just because they say a license should be $80, but we really want to promote a dog license, and we don't feel like that $80 would end up with the result that we're looking for, because we're just promoting to have a license so that consistency and all the things that come along with it. We don't necessarily have to go with that rate. That is the will of the council in order to approve these items. So, based off the will of the council and where we think would be appropriate.
Do you factor in things like, you know, we want more houses built, and so if we raise the amount that they have to pay for their permit, maybe they go someplace else? Is that factored into that discussion at that time?
Right.
Okay.
It's not just...
They're not going to go somewhere else.
We're not just going to slap the rates in front of you and go, "Let's go with this".
You're going to pay a lot more everywhere else.
It's going to be a discussion.
Okay.
And it's not a fast and quick and easy thing.
Okay, because we need to know the impact of each raise on that particular department, and how it's, you know, doing, not only how they're doing the work, but how it affects those that are using that service.
Right, and I believe the projection was about $800,000 of items not being reimbursed for the actual costs of the services. And these aren't daily things. These aren't something that's spread across everyone.
Yeah.
It's those who are choosing to utilize the service.
Right.
So, someone who doesn't have a dog shouldn't be responsible for the license if they don't have a dog. You know, those, somebody who's not building an item or getting a business license wouldn't be responsible.
out of the pro fund, which is not inexhaustible. We'll burn that down over the next number of years. And so that's where my concern is. The more we take out of the pro fund, the sooner we'll run out of that money to replace-
Well, that's a planned deficit spend. I mean, we have a plan, and we've known it, we've approved it. We know that the pro fund is going away.
Right.
And we know about when, unless we have some hundred percent emergency come up. So I mean, you know, to, to keep beating that drum is a little bit redundant, because if we plan to, that's what we-
Understand, but I'm gonna keep beating that drum because I wanna make sure the town doesn't run out of money. You guys experienced it, I did not, and I, I wanna, we're trying to set a trajectory where we will have funding that supports the town, and anything that we can cut eventually, we will have to do that.
I, I would add to that conversation, though, that the intent of the pro funds is to help the recovery of the town and the, primarily the building and probably to some extent other departments. This disparity between the revenue and the expenditures of those departments is a part of the recovery. So we wanna be very mindful of whether or not there would be unintended consequences that would impact the recovery of our town by increasing those, those fees. But with that said, I had a question in there. When they come back to us, will they be by department so we could approve them individually, or would it be just one rate?
I would like to bring them back all together by department, if that makes sense, to bring it together. But it's definitely going to be by department, because I, I just can't see it as one big lump sum. It's hard to digest that way. So that's how I foresee it. In the report, it's broken down by department, and so I would envision it to be similar to that. And then going back to the pro funds, so the pro funds are backfilling our revenue. So with the event that we had, property taxes, which predominantly fund the town, is how we are providing services for all the different departments, police, fire, finance, public works. It's all drawing from those property taxes. And so being as frugal and fruitful as we can with our finances for the pro funds is how we're trying to extend our timeframe for, in theory, the next twenty years. And so I think all of the points that you've made are all valid, and it's just implementing and getting to that endpoint where everything can be successful to the best of our abilities. And, you know, whether it's backfilling some of these items for animal control or PD, you know, all these departments are providing services, and so we're just trying to recoup the best we can so that the other services that are general for the bulk of the community can be accessible in the near future. We are trying our best to be good stewards.
Any more questions, Amy?
No cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Move approval.
Second?
Motion by Boland, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Boland?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amy.
So six C, consider authorizing staff to advertise contract 2025-002 hazardous fuels reduction service contract. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. Good evening again, council. This item relates to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program project through FEMA for hazardous fuels reduction project. As mentioned in the item subject, we are seeking to release a request for proposals. That council has asked these kind of checkpoints to come before the council, before they go out on the streets looking for input and potential recommendations for award. So with that in mind, some quick background. This project was initially applied for funding through FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in two thousand and nineteen. It was initially scoped to add staff to the Paradise Public Works Department to implement an enhanced fuels reduction program within the public right-of-way, and the primary means being herbicide and mechanical management, as well as, I should note, the environmental review that, again, has been well documented and discussed in this council, took the last, you know, three to five years to get through, through FEMA. And with that, the approved document narrowed the scope of work to only include a buffer work and clearance zone of eleven and a half feet from the existing roadside pavement edges. So with that, the project was recently authorized to proceed with final environmental clearance last October. And with this revised scope of work and requirements governing staff time and equipment rentals, staff is recommending converting this work to one hundred percent temporary contract work. We are requesting approval to release and advertise the request for proposals. Qualifications and the scope of this work, we're asking for a professional forester, five years' experience in the industry, demonstrated knowledge of regulations and best practices and fuels management reduction efforts, slope stabilization, erosion control, appropriate spray program applicators, licenses, and certifications. The scope of work in general will be kind of a seasonal management, but the start will be preparation of an annual work plan for hazardous fuels management within the public right-of-way. Primary efforts will be the implementation of that plan with seasonal fuels reduction activities through chipping, mulching, and spraying, and then reporting. Last, the budget, term, and next steps include, the project is one hundred percent funded through two grants, the first of which being a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, in which we were also able to secure a CDBGDR infrastructure allocation to satisfy the project's match requirement. The total project cost is one point six two five million dollars. Initially, we were hoping this would, you know, last about thirty year, or, I'm sorry, not thirty years. That would be nice.
That'd be nice.
Thirty months. But at this point, with the time we have left, we look for the performance period through the end of October, 2027. And I should note, this is pending a 2018 Campfire 4407 disaster extension at the federal level. This is pending. It's been verbally stated to us that this is going to happen by the end of the year, but that is a major thing we are watching, that if the disaster is not extended, HMGP programs could be, could be required to cease before they really even get started. And so that is a big deal. We are watching that issue. If tonight's action is approved, we expect contract award recommendations to come back in November of 2025. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
Is this spray just a killer, or is it a pre-emergent also?
It could be a combination of both. And so, again, based on the seasonality, the weather, you know, whether it's late fall, early winter, there could be some pre-emergent work. There could be some work just in general spraying before or after the weeds have emerged in the public right-of-way.
I remember last time you sprayed, you had, my impression was you got an earful from some folks. Do you feel like the opt-out feature is gonna mitigate that negative feedback?
Yes. So there will still be an opportunity for those to sign up for a no-spray agreement. What we require is if you would like the Public Works Department to skip an address to not receive, to receive a spray in the town's property in front of your address, that we can do that and document a spray agreement. That can be administered through this grant as well. And what we ask for return is that, that you, the property owner, requesting that spray agreement to be executed, take care of the maintenance of the, the weeds in front of your property on the town's property.
Okay. The other question would be, are there any properties large enough that you could put some goats on it? Our town loves goats. And if there's any way you, they could subcontract it out to some of the goat pokes up here, put them on their-
Yeah, I truly-
Road right-of-ways, Ron.
I know, but you-
There's goats in the road.
No, there are some, there are some areas that are wide enough that you could do that.
Small, fit me goats.
Very smart goats.
Smart goats.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. When the determination was made to reduce the project to eleven and a half feet from the roadside edge, it really limits our ability on types of creative fuels management. So with that, mechanical and herbicidal applications are really most appropriate.
So, do you say something about future funding is jeopardized or not guaranteed or what?
Yeah, so one issue we are watching is the federal disaster expires at the end of this year, and we have been told that that is going to be extended. But it's not in writing at this point, but that is a federal issue that affects the entire disaster for 4407.
'Cause that goes to my question. So it's a million six for two years of treatment. The weeds grow every year, multiple times a year, for all of our town right-of-ways on public roads and not private roads. And so what happens in year three? What happens when, if we don't have grant funds or matching funds? Do we go back, do we maintain these things then?
Yes. Yeah, so Public Works Department is currently performing this work annually, and this grant would help us do that better, in my opinion. And what it mostly will allow our team to do is to get to other work, as well as including drainage, potholes, and other projects around town. But this will enhance and, and augment our work. And when the, the program ends, you know, we go back to standard operating.
It's a good thing, I see. The only thing is, in the contract, whoever gets this contract, because, and I talked to you about this earlier, I know it happened in the past. When you go spray weed killer, and, and you're spraying weeds that are yay tall, and then they die, if you don't cut them down or grind them up or take them away, they're still a fire hazard. You know, even more so now that they're dead. And I know that's happened in the past. Don't mean that as a criticism, but, so this contract, they, they will have to make sure, if they kill something, they gotta haul it away. They gotta deal with it.
Yeah. Timing is everything with spray program implementation, and we're excited to bring on a team that can help us manage that, so it really doesn't even happen to begin with. But again, our team's always committed to reducing and coming back behind-
Pre-emergent would help, because-
Yeah.
Then it won't grow.
Yeah, we've had successes with that as well.
Cool. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. I just, in, in your explanation of it, it, it struck me that we are requiring licensed contractors for this piece, but not for the weed abatement piece that Ms. Clark spoke to earlier. Is that correct? They're different?
So for, I can't speak to the other program. What I can speak to the program is the certifications that I've put forward through the FEMA grant.
The answer I got to that question, Heidi, was that fuel reduction or whatever, you know, doesn't require that. There's an exemption built into that type of operation.
This is the same fuel reduction?
Well, that's what it's being called, but I don't know that it's the same.
Fire, it is fire reduction.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're two different things.
It sounds like we're talking about the same vegetation, just one is on private property and one is on public. Is that more or less the difference?
And one's with a grant?
Yeah.
Different money?
Oh, maybe the money source? That might be. That's what I'm just trying to clarify the contrast of those.
I'll follow up with that on our side and get clarification before we release the RFP. But in general practice, this type of funding, we require licensed contractors.
We need to stay that way.
Yep.
We need to stay that way. We have any cards? No cards?
Any cards?
I have no cards.
I move approval.
I have no cards on this item.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion by Boland, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Boland?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So six D, consider authorizing town staff to issue a request for proposals to update the long-term community recovery plan. Colette?
Thank you, Mayor Crowder and council. As you may recall, in 2019, council approved a long-term community recovery plan after the campfire, which really has served as our blueprint for recovery since that time. We updated that plan in 2022. It was a smaller update, really kind of trying to capture the efforts that we had done so far and update our projects based on new community input priorities and knowledge. So now, we had the opportunity to apply for another grant through CDBGDR. This is through the mitigation planning and public services. So that full acronym is CDBGDR MIT PPS, in case you're curious. They just keep adding items to the end. So this tranche of funding had a maximum of one point five million dollars to apply for. We applied in the PPS category for three grants. You may recall, council approved this application at the time. Five hundred thousand was for an update to the long-term community recovery plan, which is what we're talking about tonight. There was five hundred thousand going towards those additional in-home units for the sirens. So we heard Brian talk about that earlier, which is the grant that we're waiting on that final approval for, for those additional funds. And then another five hundred thousand to do public service mitigation work, in which the town would sub-grant that out to community groups to do mitigation work in the community. So today, we're talking specifically about that long-term community recovery plan update. We had received the official award and the standard agreement for those funds, finally. It has been a long process, about a year. And so now we are ready to issue an RFP for that work to responsible contractors who would be able to come in and do that for us. So you have the RFP there in your packet. We're looking to do about a month turnaround for those proposals. Then we will evaluate those and determine a contractor and bring that back to you. Our goal is by the November council meeting to award a contract. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
I had one question. I'm glad we're moving forward with this. I am happy to see that. But I was curious if, and then maybe there's reasons why these things aren't in the, the scope of work. So I'm just asking for, to satisfy my curiosity. The sewer service area, the sewer projects, is there a reason why that isn't part of that, or?
So this is really intended to be a more general community recovery plan. I would expect that whatever is happening with the sewer will be incorporated into this plan, but this would not be determining that. So it would kind of be informed by what's going on by the sewer, but this plan would not-
Not driven.
Right. We would not ask this contractor to determine a sewer service area.
Okay.
That's a good question.
So I have a question about, I remember both times. In 2019, when we finally allowed people back into town, there was quite a few people that participated, even though most of us didn't live here at the time. And so we had the little charts and the red and green dots. And then we updated this thing a while back. And my concern is, we're asking for community participation, and that's a big part of this, because the community needs to, it needs to be their plan, not our plan. Okay? And the last update we did, there was like, there are more people in this room right now than responded to all of the outreach we did in that update. You know, and that's my concern. You know, some of these things we do, fifty people respond. And there's twelve thousand people living here now. You know, like I say, there are more people in this room right now than participated in that last room. How are we gonna guarantee that the public is actually engaged?
That is an excellent question. And what I would point to is, the last process that we did, we really didn't have a budget for it. We funded it ourselves, and we also asked some other community groups to, to put in some money to do that. So we were use, we were using a very small budget to do this. We really didn't have a big advertising or community outreach budget at all. This, these funds, which are one hundred percent funded through CDBGDR, there is no local match. So we do not have to put any of our town money towards this. All of these funds going towards this will be to pay the consultant, but a huge portion of this is for the community outreach, advertising, getting people to either the physical meetings, to do the online survey, to advertise this, to make sure it is in front of our community everywhere they look, to make sure we do get that participation. Because I agree completely, the success of that first plan in 2019 was due to the community showing up. And of course, that was a very unique time for us as a community, in which we came together in a really unprecedented way. We really want to get that level of participation again. That's a huge focus of this. And we have the resources to do that through this grant.
I, I appreciate that, but it's great we have funding for this. And I, I was very much impressed by the group we used in 2019 and for the update. I didn't realize that we were self-funding that, but my, I think I have a, a basic distrust for consultants. They charge a lot of money, and they claim they can do all kinds of wonderful things. And so we buy a lot of radio and TV ads and whatever. You know, I'm just concerned that, like, we have to get, the community has to be a part of it. I don't know how we do that. I, you know, again, if we are hiring a consultant, there has to be some guarantee that they're gonna be able to get a certain percentage of participation. Otherwise, you know, they don't get paid. I mean, I, I know that's an impossible thing maybe to write into a contract, but I mean, you know, I want more of this.
Part of that is on the community.
Huh?
Part of that is on the community to step up and be a part of it.
Sure is. But just doing, doing TV ads and all that, online story, it does, a lot of people don't do it online. My wife has-
Right.
-trouble with internet and all that stuff. She doesn't know how to fill out forms. She didn't wanna learn, you know, so. But there are people that care.
I think we are getting a better participation.
My wife is in trouble with internet and all that stuff. She doesn't know how to fill out forms. She didn't want to learn, you know, so, but there are people that care.
I think we are getting a better participation, you know, in general. A lot of our more recent meetings have had a lot more community response.
All of these things we've done with sirens tests, and with sirens, you know, 50 people, you know, I mean, we had 8,000 people in town at the time, and less than 300 people responded to that. Those are my concerns.
Maybe we can get it on rants and raves, and get some more traction.
No.
I did have one other question, kind of on Woody's point about like, an accountability piece for the consultants. I know we've experienced with our healthcare one in particular, has taken a significant amount longer to get the result. Is there any accountability built into that? Like if they say they're going to have it done by one, a certain date, and they don't for eight months later?
Sure, absolutely, there is. I do want to take this opportunity to talk about that other, the healthcare study. So the timeline on that was entirely of our own doing. So we set that timeline ourselves, and then we extended it ourselves, based on what we wanted to see back in the level of participation that we wanted to see. And so that was something that the town was involved with all throughout the way. And I think, you know, what it comes down to is the product that we want to have at the end. There are certain processes that we go through where we do have a very hard deadline that we need to meet. And then there are others where what we really want at the end is a very quality product. And so sometimes that takes a little bit of extra time, and that's something that council has to give direction on, and what is the priority. And so in this case, I would say absolutely, we want to have this done in a reasonable amount of time, but we also want a quality product at the end. And so if that means additional time, that is something that we could bring back to council to indicate that, you know, this is looking like, you know, we want to do an extra community meeting. We don't maybe have quite enough input, or something else that happens during this time that may, you know, give us that question of, do we want to extend the time or not? But that's absolutely something we could do during this process, is come back to council to check in, to say, this is where we are. Do you want to extend it, or do you want to, you know, move forward?
Mm-hmm.
Any cards?
I have no cards on this item.
I got to do it? I move approval. Why not? I want to roll.
I'll second.
Motion by Boland, seconded by LaSalle, Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
6E, consider reviewing options relating to administration of progressive design-build contract for the Town of Paradise sewer project. Mark.
Thank you again, Mayor Crowder. This item has a couple of parts that we'll take in pieces, but yes, the first item is relating to options with our progressive design-build contract, as well as releasing a request for qualifications for a wastewater treatment facility design. Some quick background, I mentioned earlier in the agenda, Paradise Town Council unanimously selected Alternative 1, including a hybrid gravity-low-pressure collection system, aerated lagoon, wastewater treatment method, and a percolation-evaporation pond discharge, as the most affordable, scalable, and formidable solution to advance the Paradise Sewer Project. With this in mind, we must contemplate options to our original progressive design-build contract. This actually came up during the last meeting on the item, as it holds with Mountain Cascade Incorporated, which was originally executed with the regional project in mind. Separate from that, we must also issue a new request for qualifications for the Paradise Sewer Project wastewater treatment facility design services. The reason for that being is that in the original request for qualifications, we were not contemplating a local treatment facility. And so those services were not identified in our original procurement, and it's really, it's not practical to change a project significantly and add services that were not originally contemplated in the original procurement. So with that, we absolutely have to issue a new RFQ to design the treatment facility. So for the first part of this agenda, I'll be talking about the progressive design-build contract. This is the existing condition, that again, was originally planned for the regional project. And we could continue moving forward with this, and issue a new procurement for just the wastewater treatment facility only. This is a kind of a structural chart between the Town of Paradise, and our staff, and the council, and the community deriving this project. We have hired HDR to support and augment our staff, and be an owner's agent that helps us deliver this product, or this project. And down below, I've highlighted the executed PDB contract, which is held by Mountain Cascade, which is the builder, again, using progressive design-build, was really an applicable approach to a regional project with a lot of different unknowns, and a lot of different challenges, especially as it relates to an 18-mile export pipeline to the City of Chico's water treatment facility. With that, they hired Corolo as their design engineer. And so under this option, we could continue moving forward, and advertise for just only a wastewater treatment facility, being new to the project. This is the fastest method for the project schedule, but it does carry a couple of risks. One of those, mostly notably, is the, in the progressive design-build delivery model, we reach what's called a guaranteed maximum price, moving forward for what it's going to cost when the ultimate design is settled. And that is essentially moving forward a one-to-one discussion between the Town of Paradise and Mountain Cascade. One of the project concerns and community feedback items that we've had come forward in the new iteration of the project is a desire for more competition in the selection of a constructor with a revised project. So with that, we have two subsequent options to consider as well. One of those being terminating the original PDB contract, and taking assignment of the Corolo agreement, and issuing a new procurement for wastewater treatment facility only. And so moving from the previous PDB arrangement to more of a traditional design-bid-build model, to where we still have the town staff moving the project forward, HDR supporting us, helping us manage the project, assuming or taking assignment of the Corolo contract as our designer, and then when that design is complete, we put out a bid document that's looking to add the constructor. And I'll note at this point, is that'll have to happen again for that wastewater treatment facility regardless. And so we might reach a point with this alternative to issue a procurement for either both, or combined in one contract, or separate into two contracts, because they're so different, but to bid-build the collection system, as well as the treatment facility. And I really do want to take a moment here to acknowledge the strong efforts and great partnership and participation by Mountain Cascade on this project, and in no part is the recommendation Option 2, or even considering Option 3, which is not recommended, a reflection on the quality of work that Mountain Cascade has done in through this. And so we're really grateful for them, and we honestly would not be here with a viable project if not they had put in such a great effort into the regional project that really helped us understand what that project would truly cost. And so for that, I sincerely extend my gratitude to their team. With that, though, moving forward based on the community concerns and desire for public bidding at the ultimate construction project, this is the option that is recommended. The third option that we could consider would be to essentially issue a whole new procurement for both the consultant, or I'm sorry, the designer, and the contractor, and subsequent methods. And this would add a lot more for our project schedule, and does not allow us to really keep the momentum we currently have going. Having so much work already been done by the Corolo design team and the collection system, there's a lot of value to keeping them as part of this team, because of all of the work, again, that has already been complete, that can be used moving forward. So with that, we presented this to our ad hoc committee, which again, is comprised of the mayor, councilmember Heidi Lang, as well as representatives from Paradise Irrigation District, and other stakeholders. And we unanimously support Option 2, to move forward with terminating the PDB contract and assuming the Corolo subcontract. This again, keeps the momentum and design work. It allows for new competitive bid processes, that is representative of the new collection system area. Second part of this agenda item is to issue that new request for qualifications immediately for the wastewater treatment facility design. This would allow us to bring this new team onboard alongside HDR and Corolo to complete the environmental work in tandem with the overall project progression as well. So that's a really great part about putting this out now, because the overall effort to get executed contracts on the treatment facility design could take three to six months easily. And so the goal is, is to have this team onboard that will help inform the environmental work that HDR is doing, especially as it relates to citing the treatment facility, looking at objective pros and cons of the different options that are presented. So for the financial impact, all design phase work, everything I've covered up to this point in the slide, is reimbursed through existing CDBGDR planning grant. The PDB contract Option 2 does not add cost to the project. The wastewater treatment facility design RFQ is expected to cost upwards of $5.5 million, inclusive of engineering support during construction. All of that is within our budgets, and especially as presented at the previous council meeting. And this action tonight would allow this work to continue, and put out the RFQ for a wastewater treatment facility, and then also the direction on the PDB contract management. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have if we do proceed. We work with the PDB contract team as soon as possible, and then again, releasing the RFQ, and then looking to award a contract for that RFQ at the December 20 of '25 council meeting. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Good report, Mark. I appreciate that. You know, I have mentioned before from this dais that I had concerns about consultants. And I know I had expressed concerns about HDR specifically in the past, when we went in through the whole fiasco of cost-estimating, and all the stuff that we went through with the town, going down to Chico with the sewer treatment plant. But I met with Mark and talked to him, and I have complete trust and confidence in Mark's ability as an engineer, and his integrity as a professional. And I, so I met with him privately, and I said, can I trust these people? Are they doing a good job? And he assured me they are. And so I believe him, and I believe that, so, because they've made some changes as a result of past history, and he has assured me that they're doing a really superb job on our behalf. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate you sharing that information with me. I want to let the public know that I, as one councilman sitting here, have complete confidence in our engineering department, and what Mark Maddox has done for us. And so when it comes time, when all the comments and questions are done, I'll move approval of this recommendation.
Any cards, Melanie?
I have no cards on this item.
Any other questions?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Colleton, seconded by LaSalle, Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
How we get to the good part?
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to move on to item 7A1, but before we, before we do, I was talking to the town attorney. This is about the number of hens that are here. Because I put it on the agenda, and I put it to increase the number of chickens from two to 12. Well, it was 12, but, and there was no talk of roosters or rabbits. That kind of came up later, but this one is just related to hens. So let's stick to hens. Anyway.
Before we move forward on that agenda item, I would like to recuse myself for this item of discussion.
Go ahead, Heidi. Thank you.
Yeah. It's all right. Do you have to recuse yourself if you have chickens?
You don't have to recuse yourself if you have chickens. But if an individual member wants to recuse themselves because of that, that's their prerogative.
So, anyway, the reason this went on the agenda is, obviously, a lot of people in this room are interested in this, and I did hear from a lot of them. And, you know, you've got places like Rockland that allow more chickens than we do, so two does not really seem like a reasonable amount. And, you know, especially with the price of eggs, people are trying to, you know, feed their family and what have you, so that's why I put it on the agenda. So any comments from the council?
What are we looking for today? Are we looking for staff to come back with a number? We're trying to come up with a number ourselves here? What's the intent of this particular item?
Well.
Susan Sam, we give a number. We give a number? Yeah. I would, I'd like to.
Yeah, use your numbers.
This is on. Can you hear me?
No.
We can't hear you guys.
I understand you.
Well, I hadn't started talking yet.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to propose, and also, there is a ability, if you have more acreage, to add to that number. In other words, I don't think a piece of property that's two acres would be, should be the same as maybe a piece of property that's a third acre. Right, or whatever. So you'd be able to increase, and there's some examples of that in what we got here, that I guess Buick County does that with an increase. So I'd like for us to at least consider that.
So how would that be, like, so if we set a number, say, you could have?
I didn't say I had the answer. I'm just saying, I'd like to consider it. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't have the answer. I think it's something we need to develop, but I'm just saying, if you have a third acre, and we're saying 12 chickens, that's small. And, you know, the biggest thing about this is, they've got to be contained. I mean, they got, they can't be, we don't want to be Uba City where they're everywhere.
That's where the roosters go.
That's where the roosters go. That is probably true. I didn't hear that. But if that's true, then wouldn't a two-acre piece, or some other piece, be able to add to that number as, because it just seems out of proportion to the piece of property. But I'm just throwing it out there. And I proposed this 12 years ago, and I got slammed by it, so.
Well, you won't this time.
I'm not so sure. Well, I don't know. I don't know.
So, okay, well, then maybe we need, before we give direction, maybe we should hear from people that have chickens.
Sure.
Because I don't know, I don't know, like, if you got, like you say, if I've got a two-acre parcel, you know, and I don't know, how many eggs do you need? I mean, I don't know. But there's 4H, there's a lot of different reasons why people do.
Exactly.
People eat chicken, they can raise them for food, you know?
Exactly. They do raise them for food. They raise rabbits for food. I mean, it's, there's a lot of reasons.
Yeah, we talked about rabbits today.
I don't know. Start that.
Okay. Cards, Melanie?
Yes. First card is Christine Poggi.
Good evening. Thank you again. This is the fun part. So to clarify what you're talking about, you're talking about municipal code 1735.250, and that's the code that we want you to change. So it does include rabbits. If you've read it, have you read it? Okay. So A, what, pardon me? A is two chickens and two rabbits may be kept and raised upon residentially zoned properties. It doesn't have to do with the size of the property. In the 40s, and USDA had people keeping chickens in their garages, and what they called, I can't remember the name of it now, but anyway, they were basically in cages, like they do today commercially. So the size of the property is irrelevant, and it also is not mentioned in the code. So we're talking about residential properties, we're talking about chickens and rabbits, and the amount is important. Roosters, if you don't want them, that's fine, they're not necessary, but they're not terrible either. And then the part of the code that we want to keep is exactly what you said, and that is that pens, coops, and other areas used to contain and/or confine chickens and rabbits shall be maintained in clean and sanitary conditions. So actually, what we're proposing in changing this municipal code is to have a minimum of four chickens. Tractor supply, and everywhere else you get chickens, they don't want you to have less than that for flock health. So we're actually way above and beyond what the code says. Roosters, that's up to everybody else. Maximum number of chickens, I would not recommend 12. I have a family of six, and I need three but if you are going to limit that, I would recommend to three chickens per person in the household, so that that would change. But it's not the property that creates that. The other thing is that the reason, this, this whole, this code and the administrative form that you fill out so you can have animals on your residential, or whatever, I'm not even exactly sure what that is, it's encumbering. It's a starvation policy, which basically means nobody here has legal chickens because they have to be within 75 linear feet of adjacent properties. So we're also recommending, when you do change that, that it changes to 25-foot setbacks so that people can have those chickens in their yards. Again, the yard is not the problem, it's, we all agree on the maintenance. So rabbits, my daughter, we have rabbits. I put them over my garden, and they poo right in my garden, and they're fantastic. The homesteading community is growing. Thirty-five percent of Americans are growing their own food now, and this is a big deal about what Woody was mentioning. The people that are here are here because of chickens, because of homesteading, and they came to two meetings. So if you really want to know what's popular, and that what will build up that tax base is encouraging homesteading. So for rabbits, I recommend, because my daughter has rabbits and the kits, and I don't want to put animal control in a situation when they're wondering if a baby rabbit is a rabbit or a size rabbit or anything, it's just to make sure that that's around 30. I know it sounds like a lot, but babies are eight per litter, and if she's got a couple litters and animal control comes and takes them away, that's going to be a big problem. Thank you.
Can we say Kevin's timer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to set the timer here. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I heard this ordinance of two chickens, and I thought I was going.
You need to get closer to the mic or speak louder.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know. So I heard of this ordinance less than 12 hours ago, and I thought I was going clocking crazy. Two chickens, as someone had already addressed, actually is harmful to the flock. So I know some of you are half-conscious here as I'm talking, but I'd appreciate some attention. You know, the fact that we're over here trying to limit the flock size to two when chickens are social animals, they did a study recently about how this type of isolation affected humans, and they compared it to the equivalent of smoking 16 cigarettes a day. So now we're trying to damage the flock health of where we're supposed to be getting food? I think that's a little silly, but I'm not going to go into the rest of that. I'm grateful that Steve, Mayor Steve here, is actually working to improve the size to 12. I think that would be great. There's a city that you guys may know, Seattle, has a population of over 800,000, and they have a flock size limit of eight. So they're 175 times bigger than we are. So that's something to think about. Also, a lot of the properties here in Paradise, they're still vacant, so you don't have the same density factor or neighboring issues. I think we could all agree that most of the issues come from the roosters making noises, but a lot of the hens, you know, we're depending on them for food. Financial implications for the town could be reduced local food production, administrative costs, of course, benefit the council members, but limited agricultural economic opportunities we have for the residents, higher food costs, reduce household food resilience, economic and educational opportunity loss. I don't know why, you know, this ordinance would be in place for any longer than it has to be. I think we could all agree, having independence for our food would really be helpful here on the ridge, and having less dependence on places like Chico, although we certainly appreciate all their support since the fire. So that's all I have to say. Thank you all for listening.
Just to correct somewhat of a misstatement, the purpose of this meeting is to look at increasing the number. There's, the ordinance says there's two, and that's been on the books for a number of years. As Councilmember Bolin said, he tried to change it a number of years back and got earful of that. This meeting is not to say we've got to keep it at two. This meeting is looking at what we should increase it. Thank you.
Kristen Holman?
I just wanted to thank you so much for looking at this issue, and thank you for already considering raising the number. Just wanted to bring up a couple of things. One thing is, if you have a flock, let's say you have 12, then those will get older, right? And you'll need to replace them with other chickens. And so in order to do that, you get chicks in, and some of them will be roosters, right? And you don't want to kill your older chickens while they're still producing. So if you're wanting a minimum of 12, at some point, you might need more than 12 in order to get down to 12, because half your chicks might be roosters, or, you know, it takes six months to get a chick to be able to lay an egg. So I would say 12 is a good minimum number, but for most families, in order to sustain a flock, you're actually going to have periods where you need more than that in order to kind of eliminate roosters, also to then cool out older birds. I also wanted to mention with roosters, I know they're a noise thing, but one person last week said, you know, dogs are also noisy, but they're also, if we want a sustainable community where we can produce our own food and not rely on trucking in everything, roosters play a good role in that, because then you get your own chicks. And so I would just say to consider the idea of allowing roosters, or a small number, or one per flock, or something, in order to be able to be sustainable. So thank you so much.
So this is the real reason that I got involved. So historically, backyard flocks have played an important role in food security. During Railroad 2, the government encouraged families to keep victory flocks as part of the Victory in Garden movement. These weren't just about fresh eggs, they're about resilience, self-sufficiency, and taking pressure off strained food systems. We face different challenges today, but the principle is the same. Families can do and contribute to their own food security with a small flock of chickens. Small is a relative term. Chickens are flock animals, need a minimum of four to thrive, which we've already gone over. And for families, the math is simple, the average household needs at least two to four hens per person to provide enough eggs, not just for daily use, but also to preserve the extras during the winter through, like, water glassing, dehydration, stuff like that, to help with when they slow down. I'll skip my rooster part. And of course, just like with any other animal, it should be expected that chicken owners keep their coops and runs clean. Nobody is definitely arguing that. Same thing with any kind of animal or livestock, anything needs to be kept clean for responsible animal husbandry, to prevent odors and pests, and ensure both healthy birds and good relationships with our neighbors. And finally, I believe these changes will benefit not only individual families, but our community as a whole. Paradise is rebuilding by making ordinances more welcoming to homesteaders and younger families who want to live more sustainably. We attract new residents, strengthen our tax base, and grow a thriving, resilient community for the future. And I would also argue that it would help to create those relationships within the community for buying and selling the eggs outside of that, or even just bartering and offering those that are in need. It does increase that opportunity with neighbors. So, and that is it. Thank you.
I did not come to talk about chickens, but since we're talking about chickens, I really love the idea of doing a limit of chickens based on the property size. I live in the county, just outside town limits, and that's how we do it there, and it's really, it's pretty straightforward. They do animal units per acre. So if you're going to have a pig, that's like one animal per acre. If you're going to have chickens, it's like 12. Or goats is six. So they give you a limit of how many animals you have, based on like the size of the animal and how many acres you have. So people with over five acres can have quite a lot of animals and keep them safely and comfortably, and people with a minimum number of acres can have a reasonable amount, whatever your amount is that you're setting. But beyond that, it's nice for larger parcels to be allowed to have larger numbers of animals, like we homestead too, at my house. So I love the idea of increasing the number of animals allowed, chickens allowed, on the larger parcels.
I've had chickens my whole life, and they just make life so good. They just bring your family and your animals just so much joy in it. And, but they do only lay for a certain amount of time, so then I have older hens, and I don't, I do eat chicken, but I'm not capable of doing it myself. So when they get old, they don't lay anymore, and so, but I keep them around because they're beautiful, and I don't feel just like killing them because they don't lay. Anyway, more is awesome, and they take care of my garden. Like, I don't have a bug problem. They, they help in the whole architecture, in the process of the garden, and I have a really nice garden, and I think it's because my chickens are shitting everywhere. So thank you so much for considering raising the limit, because they're just really fun to have. Thank you so much.
So no more cards? Any comments?
Well, they do do that.
So I, I'd like, from what I heard, a lot of people in town don't have acres, so doing acres thing like the county does them. But if we just say there's like, they're saying fours flock health, or eight, or whatever it is, what if we give direction to alter the ordinance to where, in a residential setting? Because we have other restrictions, right? You've got to keep it clean, you've got, you know, whatever. So there's other things that chicken owners got to adhere to or follow. So what if we just say, in a residential environment, regardless of size, there's a minimum of eight, or 12, or six, or whatever is a good number? That's a minimum. So that then if the family needs two chickens per member, and they got 12 people in the family, they could have more, because they're still going to have to take care of them, keep them clean, and do all that stuff, right? So maybe instead of, you know, that eliminates like, well, if you've got a bigger property, you can just have more. We don't have to get into that. We could just say, if we're going to change it, we're going to let you have minimum this many. You can have a minimum, like what we're saying now, is you can only have two, or two to four or something. So maybe that's a solution.
I'm not sure how that works, because we normally don't set a minimum, because you're telling them they must go out and buy four chickens if that's.
No, you're not. No, well, I, again, I don't, maybe it's not, okay, okay.
Maybe that's what they want, you know?
Yeah. Okay, so maybe, I mean, just saying that, you know, like, you don't try to go to that higher end, just.
So I don't, I don't know that there's going to be chicken police out there looking, you know, to see how many you got. I mean, the issue's going to come in, making sure you keep your place where it's not a problem for the neighbors.
Yeah, the neighbors complain.
And they're not running loose, those things aren't an issue. Those become an issue, I think that's where we need to focus our ordinance, is under the side of keeping it clean, odor-free as much as possible. You know, you're not going to be perfect, but nothing in town's perfect, and, and you can't have them running around. That, we got to go to that extent, more than, the number thing just doesn't make sense to me. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't understand that. I don't have, I don't have a problem running around during the day in your backyard where it's fenced. That's fine. I mean, if you want to take the chance with the hawks and stuff, that, yeah, that's your problem, and other things. But, but I'm just saying, that, I'd rather see us go after that side of it than I would numbers. Numbers, trust me, what they said back there was absolutely right. You're going to, you're going to have 10 that are getting old, and you're going to go get 10 more that are new, because in six months, they're going to be laying, those are going to be not laying, and there's this constant turnover, and it's just this, so. I, I don't have a problem with numbers, because I don't think people are going to overpopulate. Nobody wants all that chicken
All over the backyard.
I mean, I just, I don't know. That's just my thought. And maybe we should ask the chief what his thoughts are, not that he's the chicken police, but it'd probably be code enforcement, but.
I would say that our animal control staff could work with whoever on staff is going to draft the amendments to the ordinance. To my knowledge, the only enforcement action that's really taken is complaints of noise for roosters. Obviously, the health and welfare of the animals is most important, and so if we come across something that's an issue, then we would address it. And I think that the input from the animal control professionals, working with the community's input, I think we could come up with something reasonable.
I like that.
Well, but.
I'm sorry?
Well, we got to give direction.
Not to my knowledge.
So, right now, we're saying, the ordinance purpose is you're allowed to, or two to four.
Two. Well, I, my, my, if I could say, I would say, forget the number, and let's go towards the prevention of a problem with neighbors. Let's, let's work towards that and have the, have the animal control, a little towards that.
So then chickens would just be allowed?
Chickens are allowed, and you're not going to have, you, you take care of the size. The size is going to take care of itself. You can't, if there's, they have to have so many square feet of place to exist. They have to have so much roosting area to exist. You have to have those things, or they don't, they don't make it. I mean, they don't, they don't, it doesn't work, so it's not like I know what I'm talking about, but that's, I don't, I really don't.
Greg, you might want to be on an ad hoc committee.
I don't know that that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's a German, though.
Now, and I know, not from, there's nobody in this room that made those calls, but I did get some calls that people were not in favor of this either. Because there, there was just an incident in town where code enforcement did get involved because, and they, they had to move to another side of the house or something, and I don't know what the whole situation was or what.
And that's going to happen.
It, it is. And, but again, to be honest here, I don't think there's anybody in this room that has two chickens.
No, no.
Just saying.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, so.
Promise you that.
You know, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you, you know, put a number on there of 12, that, that you're.
They're not going to adhere to it anyway. I didn't say that.
Why not just allow people to have chickens?
Yes.
Would that be easy?
And can we, since we're talking about it all, can we actually put that in there somewhere?
Susan, you're open.
I just needed to know if you were going to make any changes to the setbacks. Right now, it's 75 feet from neighboring residents.
Yeah. I don't like to change that. I'll be honest with you, the biggest thing I'm concerned about with 12 or 24 chickens is the noise in the neighbor. That's where code enforcement will get called, and that, right now, we don't have that many calls.
But that's what it's for.
Right. But they're asking to change it some less than that.
I know, but 75 feet, I mean, you, you're going to have places where you don't have 75 feet in any direction. So, yeah, no, you're going to have that.
Yeah, maybe in the downtown, but we're talking between house to house or where your chicken coop is.
A third acre, a third acre, you wouldn't be able to have chickens. At 75 feet, a third acre would not be able to have chickens.
That's right.
A third acre wouldn't, but a half acre.
Half acre would be really close. You'd put it right in the middle of your yard.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's.
No, and you're going to put it up by your fence or by your garden, and so, so reducing that is probably a good idea. I mean, because if somebody's keeping chickens, and they're causing, people can complain, you know? And, but that's, and then, and then that situation.
But then if they complain, they can put it on the.
You don't get to talk.
Continue on, Woody, I didn't hear the rest.
Well, so, I mean, I think that, I think that somebody else had mentioned, so if you, if we reduce that.
To what?
75 feet.
50 feet? 66 feet?
If I were to put a chicken coop at my house, it would be by my fence line. That is right on my property line. So there's no house in the.
So, there's no house in the lot next door right now, but someday there will be. And when, when there is, if they, I don't get to tell them where to put their house, you know, so, I mean, I, you know, I think 25 feet is probably a reasonable, 25 or 30 feet's a reasonable thing. Because, because if their, if their management of their flock is troubling the neighbor, then they're, that's what we have animal control for, that's what we have code enforcement for. They can file a complaint, and hopefully they can work that out, you know?
I think Scott had something to add to this.
No, the only thing I was going to add is, it's important to just keep in, keep in mind, it's not 70, it's not a 75-foot setback from the property line. It's from the neighbor's home, the neighbor's residence, to the chicken coop. Is that?
Right, right. But what, like Woody said, I put it in, neighbor's not there, he builds his house, and all of a sudden, now it's there.
Yeah.
I've got to completely, just a simple.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I just, I just didn't want it to be, no, because it sounded like initially it was a 75-foot setback.
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was from property line. You're saying it's not.
Yeah, it's not from the property line.
Okay. This is why it didn't go anywhere 12 years ago, because of all this right here.
Well, so, if we just allow chickens, and we change the setback to something that's reasonable, 50 feet from the adjoining house. Because most people have to be a setback from your property.
10 foot.
So, so if that's the direction we give.
That won't make it.
That won't make it?
You're wrong.
Too close?
Because most of your lots.
I'm often wrong, thank you.
If you've done most of your lots, you're lucky to have 100 or 200 feet, you're putting a 75-foot house in there. By the time you get it, you've got five-foot setbacks on them. Seven, you may be 10 or 15 feet off the property.
No, we're talking to the adjoining house, not the front.
That's what you're saying.
But why?
The numbers, the numbers don't work.
It won't work.
Okay, well, then what's, what's a number that will work?
I, I was, I was thinking 10 foot off property line.
From what?
I was thinking 10 foot off property line. Keep it away from, off your property line, 10 feet off property line. At least it gives you an.
Does that make sense?
Oh, 10.
Okay.
So, are we saying that people have not been complying with the 75-foot setback, 75?
Absolutely.
Is that what we're saying?
Right up there with the two chickens.
Oh, with the two chickens, okay.
Nor have you been complying with two.
So, it doesn't matter what we say, they're going to do what they want?
That's absolutely true.
So, is that what you're saying, Woody?
So, let's do a goodbye-oh moment, and all gets together.
Yeah. I view the number, I've got to say this, I view the number of chickens equivalent to the speed limit in town. People don't obey the speed limit, and they're not going to obey the number, whatever number we give them, they're going to go at least.
That's why I'm suggesting we just allow chickens in the town of paradise.
Oh, get rid of the speed limit, yeah.
And we come back at another meeting, and we talk about rabbits.
I do have one more card.
Uh-oh.
Doug Spiker?
No, I was just going to say, when you're talking about the distances, like, I live on large acreage outside town limits, and my coop is like 25 feet off the back of my house. I could have it like way far away. I get the property line distance, but I think on smaller properties, if you're talking about a third of an acre or something, someone's going to have it in their back corner. They're going to use their property line to put their coop. So, I don't think it should be based on the property boundary, but doing a distance like 20 feet from a neighboring structure.
From a neighboring structure. I mean, that, that gives, you know, some leeway.
I don't care.
Yeah, that makes way more sense than putting a number on the chickens.
Okay. So, then I'm going to make a proposal.
No, motion.
I'm going to make a motion. No, 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 this is not an action item. I can't make a motion, we can't make an.
Why?
But what I can do is, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, if we have consensus, that we direct staff to come back with a changed ordinance, allowing chickens in the town of paradise, and changing the setback to 20 feet from an existing structure.
Neighboring dwelling.
Neighboring, a neighboring, neighboring home, actually should be a home. Because I don't care if it's by the garage, you know, or the shed.
Neighboring house.
Does that make, is that a clear enough direction? Would that, is that enough to work with?
The exact same way.
Is that okay? So, there are second? Oh, no, we're not. Okay, that's would be my suggestion. Do we have consensus? What about you?
Well, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
You know, I try to keep everybody happy, but what, you know, whatever.
To clarify on direction, it's 20 feet from a neighboring dwelling, no limit to the chickens.
Chicken hairline.
That is council consensus?
Yeah, that's the consensus. Now, folks, this doesn't mean go out and buy 24 chickens tomorrow, okay? We've got to have an ordinance, and that will allow you to buy whatever you want, and all that. So, you have to wait for the ordinance to come out. And now, you don't obey the one that we have on the books right now, but I'm just telling you, that's the rules.
And we do not.
They'll have to get rid of some to get down to 24.
We're just testing things for you.
And if your rabbit identifies as a chicken.
Are we going to add the, are we going to add to the animal control budget?
Yeah. We're going to, we're going to cut it to, to enforce.
Okay, so, item 72, discussion of uses of adjacently owned lots.
Woody? Okay, I put this on the agenda because in one of the ordinances, or one of the things we just changed about vacant lots and building a barn if you're raising goats, or whatever the deal was. In that new rule that we made, or permission we gave, it says that you can do that if you have adjoining lots. So, it's, I've had a few people that have bought property next door to their property, they rebuilt their home, and one of these friends of mine, he built his house, he owned the property next door, and he had his boat and his RV stored on the property next door, and he got a citation from code enforcement. Because you're not allowed to have anything on a vacant lot unless you have a home on it. So, since we're allowing this with animals in this other jur, other area, I said, I asked to put this on the agenda, because I think that if you own both properties, you should be able to use the property you own. Because you own it, and you're paying taxes on it, you're maintaining. You shouldn't have to merge it so that you can legally do it, we should just allow it. So, I want to change that ordinance to where if you own the adjoining property, you'll have to be compliant with weed abatement and all the other things, you're paying property taxes on it. It's your property. If you want to put your boat, your RV, your motorcycle on it, you should be able to. So, that's what I'm asking.
So, so question then, Woody. Does that go for, if you have the adjoining property, and you want to put your boat or motorhome or whatever, you put a garage on it as well, or?
I, I wasn't going there.
Okay, just wondering.
You know, I mean, you know, it's like, could you put a shed on it, you know? I mean, you know, I don't know. I mean, that's something that maybe, if there's, what would be the reason to say no to that? You know, if you own it, if you own two properties side by side.
So, what about?
Why does a town want you to have a shed?
What about letting Susan? I'd like to hear her input.
Okay. I would imagine you'd be the building committee and all that.
The difficulty with establishing accessory structures on vacant properties is now you have a consistency issue with the general plan, right? It has land use designations, and residential land use designations are for residences first, and then accessory uses. It, it, it just takes more, right? Because the general plan doesn't support the structures first.
What, does it, the boat, or the?
It doesn't talk about those, those are, they're not structures, it's not the same.
Right, but we cite people for having them on.
Right, so, I can, I could get you there faster with vehicles and, and boats. It's a general plan inconsistency when we get into structures, because that's a land use.
Aren't we redoing the general plan, or we're upgrading?
We are, we are.
So, couldn't we make?
Have those, absolutely. But I, I want to set that expectation, right? We talked about, that is a multi-year process. So, structures, if that was something that the community was interested in, because it's a community document.
So, you have a piece of property next door.
Right. You have the piece of property next door. You're saying, take your boat, put it on there, your RV, put it on there, your skid steer, your backhoe. Where do you stop? Where do you stop with what you're putting on that property? There, it becomes, there's a point it becomes blight to the rest of the neighborhood. And we've got to be careful, we can't, I, I get it, I have adjoining properties, I get it, and I want to use it, but I've got to be sensitive to my neighbors, and not just put anything I have on that piece of property just because I own it. It does, it's not fair to them.
You could, I, I guess you could put a provision in there that it'd have to be fenced, or, you know, but we have that with the, these, with storage containers, these metal things come off the ships. We have an ordinance.
The Conex boxes?
Yeah. We have an ordinance that says you cannot put them in front of a business, you have to put them in the backyard, they have to be fenced. There's that one metal box that sits on Skyway right in the parking.
Right, but if you put that on that.
You have to put some, some, maybe some conditions in there, if, if that's what. The other thing is, we have the nuisance ordinance. So, if neighbors complain, geez, this guy's just got all his junk there, you know, and we, we can deal with that. There's ways, he files a complaint, code enforcement goes out, you deem it a nuisance, and they're going to have.
I, I know, I just.
So, what if he has three boats and?
Two RVs.
Yeah, two RVs, I mean.
And, and a car that doesn't run, and?
No, no, there's, there's.
Well, you know what I'm saying?
I know, there's a, there's a place over on, what is it, there's, there's a property like this right now, but I'm.
There's one right now, and I won't say, but there's one right now, and it, and it just keeps, boards and more stuff keep putting on it. And it looks, it's starting to look pretty trashy, and it's.
But that's one where at some point that becomes blight in the community, and we have, there's recourses to do it. It's just, you know, if you own the property.
I, I get it, I get it. I own my next door.
It's just ironic that somebody, I told him, I said, take the tongue of your boat trailer and drag it over the property line, so that the boat's on the other property, but the tongue is on your property, and then, you know, I mean, I'm looking for a workaround, because we've got some kind of rule that doesn't make any damn sense, you know, if you own both properties. Otherwise, you're forced to pay the money, do the survey, and merge your properties. And you may not want to do that, because that may be an investment property for the future, or whatever.
And that also reassesses your tax value.
It does.
Yeah.
It absolutely does. So, I, I, I mean, I get it, but I think that's the exception to the rule. I think if we allow vehicles and things, that, I don't see.
I think it's a stepping stone to that.
Pardon me?
I think it's a stepping stone to putting anything on those lots. And, and, and again, I get it.
But it's happening now, Greg.
And you could accumulate all of that junk on your lot with a primary residence.
Perfect example, if it's happening right now, and we're not taking it now, is it going to get worse when we do say it's okay to put these other, other things on?
No, I don't.
Is it going to get worse?
I don't.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not. I, I think there's a way to get there, but I don't know, I don't know what it'd be. Susan's really smart at this stuff, and I, maybe she could figure it out.
I think the most frequent concerns that I've heard from adjacent properties is the, the storage of recreational vehicles and boats and sheds. I can, you know, while in, I can understand their desire to be able to put a standalone shop or shed, I can see drawing the line there in a little, a little bit, because if at any point they decided they needed to sell that property, then it would have that standalone shop or shed. Yeah. Or, I mean, shop, but a shed is kind of like, I don't know, a shed is semi-temporary, too.
So, they'd have to remove it before they sold the property?
Well, a shed doesn't require a permit either, if it's 12 by 12, or smaller.
12 by 10.
Oh, 12 by 10, sorry, that's right. So, I guess, I don't know.
But to the general plan thing you mentioned, where, you know, because it's residential neighborhoods, the general plan dictates that, where.
It's for residences, right.
It's got to have a residence.
And then accessory uses, right? Those are.
So, how do we, so you're the expert in this field, you know, so, is there a way for people that own a joint? I mean, why are we allowing them to do that with animals? I mean, that's just a bigger problem, you know? You're going to get complaint, I mean, you know, a guy puts a goat herd in my backyard, you know? I, I don't know, I mean, why is, why are we allowing it there in that new ordinance we created, but we're, but we can't apply the same logic to this? And, and I understand the concerns about, well, then you're going to have junkyards all over town. I don't, that hasn't happened yet. Yes, there are one or two places, but there, there's not an abundance of them.
I don't know about abundance, but it is happening, yes.
Yeah, it happens, but, but so does speeding, so does, so do people with 25 rabbits, you know? I mean, a lot of things happen, people don't follow rules, but, I don't know, it's just, that's what I brought it up for.
Don't touch my chicken.
You don't have to vote for it, it's not a vote, it's just, I think it's the right thing to do. I'll, I'll stop.
Whether it's limiting the number of vehicles that are on the neighboring, right? You can set that limit as well, if you want to limit to the permit exempt sheds with no utility, because the utility kicks in permits.
Okay, I'm sorry, Chief, I keep dragging you in this stuff, but you end, you end up being the one going out when there's a vehicle that is there and it doesn't run, someone's living in it.
Well, sometimes, mainly code enforcement would go out and look at that from an abatement standpoint, because they have special funds to support the removal of those.
Yeah, and if they're not licensed or registered or anything, then, you know, so, so, I mean, and, and Susan made a suggestion, I mean, maybe that's the way to do it. It's just like to give the property owner and the taxpayer the right to use their property, so maybe we set a limit, you know, one of, you know, you can have three vehicles or, or something, you know? Or you can specifically name, you're allowed to have a boat, a motorhome, a trailer, or something, you know, as long as nobody's living in it.
I have a problem with that, Woody, you know, in that, we, we had the emergency ordinance to let motorhomes be on lots.
It's not about that.
No, it is about that. Let me talk, let me finish. We talked about, and we allowed them to even store it. We did away with those emergency ordinances, because we said that was unsightly to have stored motorhomes on lots. Now, you're wanting to reintroduce that on the next door neighbor's lot, you know, there's a.
No, on my lot, on my lot.
Your, your adjacent lot, which has a house on the other side, and so now you have, between you, you have a motorhome. Now, what?
I've got one right in front of my front window. I've got one.
Why do we want to go back to what we did away with?
It's not going back.
It is. With motorhomes, it is, and RVs.
I'm not an RV.
Ron, one of the differences I would, I would point out is that if it's just sitting there all by its lonesome self, with nobody living in a primary residence next door, it's far more likely to be subject to vandalism and, and deterioration. But if there is somebody residing in the immediate adjacent property, they're going to keep tabs on it, it's not going to end up with, you know, that sort of thing. But that's just my observation.
It's not the same. Okay, well, that was, that's what I put on here to talk about, we've talked about it.
I do have a card.
Oh, you have a card?
Yes. Stephanie Melti.
I know, like, what you were saying, that you have bought, you know, the adjoining[1698.12] I know, like, what you were saying, that you have bought, you know, the adjoining lot next to yours and stuff, and I know I've had friends that have done that and stuff, one guy put a shop on the adjoining lot, and so like down the road, you know, like you're saying, you know, what if somebody wants to, you know, later sell it? And, you know, parking vehicles and stuff, long as they're running, not broken down, as long as they're licensed vehicles and everything. Not, you know, an eyesore and stuff, like myself, I would have a problem with it as long as they're running vehicles. Especially, I mean, I have someone just down the street from me that had bought a lot and they have a container, and they have some construction vehicles or something in and out of there. You know, it's their property, I don't know if they're gonna build there or not, but to me, you know, it's like, it's not my business, but it's not really an eyesore, yeah. But, uh, but on the other side of me, somebody built a shed and didn't clean up the rest of their lot. So, you know, that's more concerning to me than someone owning their own property and having, you know, like vehicles or like a temporary shed that could be removed or something, as a resident. But like, like, uh, like the one guy who put a shop, I don't know if he went to the town and actually had the whole property, you know, changed to, well, I'm big property or not, but I know that's a possibility too, if they want.
He would've had to have joined them to do that, or else he couldn't have done it, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and that, you know, that could be part of it, it could be, you know, licensed vehicles and stuff. You know, if it's licensed and registered and you own the property, you should be able to use it.
You have someone else?
Yeah, Carrie Max.
Hi. Okay, um, I think if you own it next door, I, uh, you should be able to put property there and it lets our neighbors know, it lets the world know that it belongs to you, and then, um, I don't know, I just think you take better care of it and then you're, then everyone knows whose that property belongs to. But I also have a question about this whole idea, I bought property across the street, does that?
Wouldn't count.
It wouldn't count, okay, that was my question, thank you very much.
Wait a minute.
Across the street, adjoining properties.
Well, alright.
If they own the road.
Oh, yeah, if it's a private road.
If they own the road, it's adjoining property.
That's true.
And you got this happening, I could take you there.
If, if it's a private road, then you own both halves of the road.
Yes.
So that would be adjoining, so I was wrong. First time ever, but I was wrong.
But it's across the street and it.
First time ever that you'll own, oh!
Oh, wow, okay.
Did Doug want to say something, did you want to say something, Doug? Wait, 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 you gotta come up to the mic if you're gonna talk, we can't.
I think it needs to be further discussed, but I think, I see both sides of it, because you've got lots that are small that people, a lot of my clients have bought both lots, figuring that they could use the second lot as part of their utilization for their, like you said, RV boats. But I think you're, you've got a point where possibly you need to fence it or something, so it isn't an eyesore to the rest of the community. But I think the stipulations on what you are gonna do, because it can be abused both ways, so it is something to be, I think it needs further discussion. Thank you.
I have another card for Amy Blue.
Who?
So, I know, this is a different, I try not to do this, but this is near and dear to my heart. I've had a lot of hoarders in my family, and I'm from Monterey County, and it's all fun and games when it's your junk, because you think it's fabulous, until you're the neighbor, and I guarantee you, when people merge these lots or they're, they have all their stuff, they're not putting their hoard of junk next to their house, it's on the property line. So you look out your kitchen window or your bedroom window and you're like, geez, that is a fabulous crappy boat that doesn't even have a trailer that's laying on the ground, and when it's your window that you have to look out of, you're gonna have a totally different feeling, like, I know, like, I have to reel my family in from not hoarding junk, and it's just horrible, it's horrible when you have to look at everybody else's junk. And so, we need to be able to protect the people who want to have their good stuff, and we have to protect the people who don't want to look at their junk. And I, it's, it's a hard place, because, you know, you work hard to get the things, but, you know, 10 years from now, they can't maintain it, and it starts melting into the ground, and then what are you gonna do? You have an ordinance that you can't put parameters in if it's too loosey-goosey, and, you know, I've seen it, I've seen the things melt into the ground, and you got tires that don't even hold air, and it's just hard to get to the point where, you know, to maintain it. And so you got the weeds, you got the junk, and it's a slippery slope, because they think they have the best thing ever.
Or it's a future, if it's a future event, they're gonna fix something up.
Oh, yeah, I, I, trust me, jeeps and boats and random things, so. Right? And it's all good stuff, and you know, it's just hard to pull it back once you open up the gates. And so that's my only, you know, caution is, protect the people who don't want to look at the junk.
What about the guy that's got the big motor home that's licensed and everything parked in the front yard?
Have you met my father? Uh, that's all I have, he had something.
If you come to my house and you look out my front window, you will see a small shipping container behind a four-foot-high chain-link fence that's been sitting there since they put that mobile, mobile home or whatever it was in there, that I look at every day, I mean, just, it's just there, you know? And it's not, and it's still painted with whatever Chinese company on it, you know?
It, this is the hard thing, because people work really hard to get the things in order to have the life that they want, but we just have to figure, we can't just have it so open-ended that.
No, I'm not suggesting it be open-ended, I, what.
I think some of the things that Susan suggested and some of the things we've discussed can kind of rein that in, like requiring it to be current license and registration, like you're not gonna be paying to license and register vehicles that.
And when you get too old to maintain it, you sell.
I mean, I've just, I'm from, originally from Monterey County, and I've seen how it just explodes, and so the reason why we purchased our home here is because of the natural beauty and because I, we didn't have to look at the junk. Now, granted, we had everything cleared out, and I don't know what it looked like before, but we don't have all the trees and the foliage to cover with the eyesores, and so we just have to make sure.
And we need to, we need to be concerned about people that want to use our property, but we also gotta be concerned about people that, like you're saying, the town, the town has gotta move up another step from where it was out of the fire. And I, and I, and I do believe that'd be going backwards, I, I think you're right on with what you're saying.
Okay, well, I brought it up to talk about, we talked about it, so.
Okay.
I, I'm sure Susan can come back with options for, for.
In 2028.
I do want to set the expectation though, based on the agenda items I already have assigned to myself, chickens will come first, right? So they'll go to commission, um, there is a legal notice and requirement, so when I take it to commission in October, you can't hear it until December, and that's because of California's notice and requirements, right? For chickens. That means that this would at least be a month behind, I can't bring them both to commission in October, my plate's too full. Okay. Okay.
Well, you're bringing the chickens first.
I'm bringing the chickens first. Because I only have one week to prep for that to get it, to hear, to set the hearing.
And he got a ticket for having his vote.
Got it.
And again, as a, as the de facto parliamentarian, we've got, I, I think, two heads nodding, yes. Do we have a third? Otherwise, we don't have a majority of the council to give direction.
Okay.
On chickens?
No, storage.
I'm not in favor of it, I mean, if there was some that, that would help us, but I, I just, and, and I, and again, I have that property next to me, but I, I don't wanna.
You can't use it.
Well, you're right, but I don't want to mess with my neighbor either, so I want to be sensitive to that.
So we're not.
What's that? What'd you say?
I think it's worth entertaining and having them, having Susan bring this back when she can get to it.
I do, so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Just work on it.
And, and it's not that it can't come up during the public polling for the general plan, if that's more stuff that we want to talk about. Because it's also, it's general plan and it's zoning updates, so.
Well, same thing on the long-term recovery.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you guys for having an engaging conversation. Next month, I'll come up with something new.
So 7, 7A3, discuss creating an insurance advocacy committee to bring together industry experts. Heidi.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to revisit that, that was something that was brought up at a couple of previous council meetings in public comment and in discussion here with the council, that it would be, it would be helpful if the town kind of orchestrated a committee to bring together community and industry stakeholders to be a part of the insurance advocacy for the town, since that is such a significant barrier for, for residents, including myself. I mean, every time I get my insurance renewal, it takes years off my life, so, um, and we had a, a little bit of interest in the last couple of meetings with discussions surrounding the Rebuild Paradise organization and some of the, um, insurance agents here in town, and so I think that's something that would be a good use of our time.
And I'll tell you, I, I'll say, so I just, this was gonna be in my, what I did, but I, I went with Rebuild Paradise, and they had three insurance companies come up here, and, uh, especially AAA, they were, they were looking at, um, if, if it was the IPHS Plus, they would think about insurance in, um, writing insurance on, on the houses. And I get talking to the guy about it, and I said, you know, it's funny, I, I was in the glass business for a long time, and it's kind of ridiculous with these two, two pieces of tempered glass, being that tempered isn't even a fire glass, and it's glazed in a vinyl frame, and if the fire comes, the glass can fall out anyway. And he says, you know, I saw those tests that they did, and that's exactly what happened. I said, yeah, he said, well, maybe that isn't, you know, something that we need to do. So they're coming around and they're talking, and, and, uh, I mean, I think it's, I think it's great, so that's, to my knowledge, that's a fourth, so we've had four companies, one, well, they're not writing now, but Mercury. I'm hopeful that, you know, at least one or two of these companies that was just here will go ahead and write. So I, I think it's really important that, that this take place.
Yeah.
Do you have a card on this item? Holly Fisher?
Good evening, council, my name is Holly Fisher. I am a board member here representing the Rebuild Paradise Foundation tonight. Um, on behalf of the Rebuild Paradise Foundation, I want to say we support the town taking an active role in insurance advocacy. This issue is critical for our community, and we believe additional collaboration can help strengthen efforts already underway. Since 2019, Rebuild Paradise has been deeply engaged in this work. We've built trusted relationships with insurance companies, launched programs like our Defensible Space Grant, created, um, a library of fire-safe home photos, and even helped to bring Mercury Insurance back to Paradise. In addition, we have more recently given tours to three other insurance companies in Paradise to explore pathways for greater coverage options. These are practical steps that are already making homeowners insurable. The success of these efforts is being recognized outside our community as well. For example, PG&E recently committed $50,000 to our gravel grant program because it has proven to directly improve insurability for local homeowners. We are also hosting an insurance forum at the Elks Lodge on September 30th to pass the knowledge we have learned to residents. I also want to highlight that it's not just the programs themselves, but it's the reputation and trust that Rebuild Paradise has built with both partners and residents through years of consistent work. That credibility is what allows insurers to come to the table and gives homeowners confidence to take action. We support any additional ideas and avenues that can make insurance more accessible and affordable, because ultimately, we all share the same goal of helping our community. Thank you for including us in the discussion.
Yeah, they've done a great job, and I think we need to team up with them, because they've already started the dialogue, but this isn't just a residential thing either.
Right.
We gotta look at it commercial, commercial, we want that to start happening, and I'm telling you guys right now, you don't want to own commercial in this town.
Right.
Because I, I, I want to throw up when I do my residential insurance, I want to kill myself when I have to do my, my commercial insurance, because it is unbelievable. And, and you're having to weigh the fact, do I even want to insure the building? Because it doesn't make sense, so.
Yeah, we, we had that problem with the Performing Arts Center. We had full insurance for a $5.2 million building, fire and all the other stuff, uh, and it cost us, I don't know, somewhere around eight or $9,000 a year, and after the fire, the re-insurers canceled this. So I had to go to the fair plan for this fire only for $3.2 million, it was like $14,000 a year. And like, I think I'm currently paying.
I went from 11 to 44,000.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
Forty-four thousand a year.
And nobody's writing commercial insurance, you know, and.
And they're gonna go to 56,000 this year, on, on the commercial.
It's nice, it's, and so we have known, I have fire insurance, but it, you know, if anything else happened, and to get a wraparound policy was another $14,000, so the $25,000.
It's unbelievable.
It's crazy.
And Doug's right, you can't sell commercial in this town.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's gonna.
They'll go on escrow and then they see what their insurance passes.
And that's what's gonna kill, kill this redevelopment downtown.
Exactly right.
So we can build a sewer, but nobody can get insurance, you know?
Council members, just so you're aware, the, this, this is properly agendized if you want to establish this committee right now, it would, it sounds like it's going to be longer than a, than a short-term thing, so it would likely need to be a standing committee, but, but you can authorize it and assign council members to it right now, it's, it's been agendized for you to do that, if, if, if that's the pleasure of the council.
And I do have one more card, if you'd like to hear it. Jared Kramer?
We were on the topic, so I thought this would be like very fitting, especially when we mentioned commercial. For our cafe, when we first opened, we were at like $250 a month in insurance or so. And since then, this year, our renewal went to over $1,000 a month. Uh, yeah, and so we had to dig through, I had my insurance agent dig through everything, she could not find it, she asked why, like, oh, that's just the new price. Mrs. Farmer's like, that's the new price, that's what it is, she's like, nothing changed, like, they, the receipts, and we submitted our receipts last year, I'm not gonna say the number, they're not our receipts, our, our total, and so they dropped a little bit. This year, they made it look like we were making over $800,000 a year, which I was like, she told him, he'll sell his cafe to you for half that. And walk away. So she was super funny, but the point is, is how many other businesses in town are, I have a great agent digging through it to find it, and she said there's a small print under a subsection that she found that they made my revenue. From what I submitted last year was direct, if you want to ask it privately, I'll tell you, completely different, and they did that, and they're doing that to other commercial clients, and we just don't know who they're doing it to. How many are just signing on the dotted line? So there's a real-world example that just happened, and I resolved that yesterday.
Well, and the problem is, as Doug knows, if you don't have over a 50% occupancy in your, in your commercial, they, they don't even look at you, they just say, forget it. So trying to get 50% occupancy in some of these projects is, anyway. Yep.
Well. What, we've already approved a budget where we're giving $25,000, we haven't seen the document yet, to Rebuild Paradise. That's already in our budget.
Well, and I can, I can address that quickly, um, so that, those documents and that, a proposed contract is going to come, um, to council at the October meeting.
Yeah, no, I understand it, I understand it. But my point was, the placeholder is put in the budget, so, and that's a plan, so we already are engaging these people that have already been doing the work, so now, that's fine, but, unless we vote not to do that, but, I mean, what would, uh, so what, I mean, is it gonna be, who all's gonna be in this? Is it gonna be business owners, is it gonna be citizens, is it gonna be, you know, what are you envisioning, 25 people on it or what?
I think that the more people that get behind it, the better, but I'm, I would be, I'll bake you a cake if we have 25 people interested in being on this committee. But I, I'm just envisioning, you know, maybe a town representative, the council representatives, the Rebuild Paradise organization, and insurance industry, um, Representative Dawn has already agreed to, if we move forward with this, participate in it, maybe the Fire Safe Council, um, or a Firewise Community Leader.
What are you talking about now, participating?
Derek.
Sorry.
Any potential participants in this insurance advocacy committee that we're talking about, yeah. But that has nothing to do, there's no fiscal impact to the community or any relation to that other agenda item for future consideration.
Well, why don't? Well, why don't, even though the attorney says, why don't we come back with, why don't we come back with, like, it would be nice to see what, what that is. We're just gonna make it up here on the spot?
We do that with all our other committees.
No, those, this is a standing committee, so.
I mean, if, are you suggesting we exclude certain people, or cap it at a certain volume?
You know, I mean, you're saying, oh, maybe it should be this, maybe it should, I mean, is, is, would the staff bring us back, is this who it should be made up of? Or is it just something your idea, and we're gonna do that?
I think the council, whoever from council would like to participate on that committee, in addition to me, would be part of coming up with that makeup unless you would like to exclude or, or cap people.
I think you're gonna be hard enough to get people, one of the volunteer to be on something like this, okay? Because it's not an easy task. So you need people that are.
That's never a reason not to do it.
Exactly. No, no, we need to do it. I'm on the walkable downtown, and we've gotta have insurance in order to have businesses. And I won't get anybody to walk downtown if I don't have any business down there. So we definitely need this.
So we can't keep talking about it, we gotta do something about it.
We, we should establish this committee as a standing committee. We need two people on it. And I would nominate yourself and Greg Boland, and I know he's too dang busy to be on it, but.
That's no excuse either.
But he's paying, what, $50,000 a year, or what he's going to? And, and, and we've gotta get this rolling because maybe he can afford it, but there's a whole lot of other businesses that can't afford that kind of money.
Can't afford it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be my, my recommendation. So I so moved that we establish this committee and we assign.
You know what, Ron? You start letting people volunteer for, rather than you're appointing people.
I just wanna not.
And you've been doing that.
No, I asked her, and she said yes, and I asked Greg, and he said yes, and then I.
I'm not gonna recommend it for everybody else and not volunteer.
Right.
Okay.
Anyway, well, let's, just.
You ready for me to make a motion? Or do we need a motion?
No, we're on it. We're, we're good.
Okay.
To clarify.
Who else is gonna be on?
This motion would be.
Seventeen, twelve, three.
They'll establish it.
Who will establish it?
The two members of the council.
No, 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 no. I don't think you can do that.
Why not?
Because I think it has to be council direction. If we're gonna create a standing committee, and you're gonna say, three citizens, or three business people, or.
They'll bring the recommendation back to us.
So let me, let me just jump in for a second. So if you create a standing committee, it is subject to the Brown Act. You have to publish an agenda, which means that any members of the public that want to come and participate can come and participate. And, and so you can certainly invite people to come, you know, business leaders and insurance folks and what have you. That can certainly be done. I don't know that you necessarily need to define who's on the committee other than council members, to, to assign council members to it. But because it's a standing committee, anybody's welcome.
I guess the only concern I'm having is, in October next month, we're going to vote on, as a council, whether or not to give $25,000 to Rebuild Paradise Foundation to continue the work that they've already started. So, you know, if we're gonna have a two council member committee, standing committee, to interact with the insurance company, shouldn't they be, just like our sewer committee is with, we got PID and other people involved, they are officially part of the, the, the community, you know, to, to develop whatever we're gonna.
My, my intent for creating this, just to be clear, is not to replace any of the work that Rebuild Paradise is doing, just to expand on it and help support that and do, it's not meant to negate that role.
So. If we're gonna subsidize them to do this work, what are you two gonna do? Or is it gonna be a collaborative thing?
Council members, if, if I may, perhaps what might help is, maybe next month at the October meeting, along with the item in which we talk about the potential work that we're going to be doing with Rebuild Paradise Foundation, I can also present a draft of this committee and what a makeup might look like for invitations, understanding that it is a Brown Act committee, it will be open to the public and noticed as such. But we can extend invitations to particular entities and individuals and agencies as well. And I can bring what that would look like alongside the Rebuild Paradise Foundation.
I see this as, maybe, may I wrong? We would sit and have this meeting, and it's bringing back, so everybody can hear what has been done in the last month or two.
Sure.
That's what we have the meeting for, right?
And trying to find other opportunities to make us more insurable.
Sure, we'll talk about that, but I mean, this is more of an open forum. Here's what's happened over the last month or two, and get that report out there. And, and next month or two, here's what we wanna do, and.
And maybe try and expand it, take it to the legislation, you know, to.
We could try to do that with Lamalfo's office, yes.
Certainly, and we can even, on a certain basis, maybe quarterly or yearly, invite the Insurance Commissioner's Office to participate. We have great contacts there, so.
Every month until he does something.
We could try.
So what are we doing here?
Nothing, we're good.
So I think we've, we've volunteered to be the council representatives, and Colette's gonna come back with a little bit of framework. Yep, so I've heard council direction to move this forward. There's the committee established, council members appointed. So I will come back with that information, and we'll go from there.
So what I would suggest, you, you either need to make a motion in a second and a vote now to establish the committee, or you can wait till it comes back with all the details to take that motion.
Let's wait.
Either way.
Let's wait.
Wait, yeah, yeah. It's a good idea, I totally, I totally support that idea, but I just.
You flipped them, flipped them.
Okay. Great, so that item will have both, both approvals for council to consider moving forward with a contract with Rebuild Paradise, as well as the committee. Great, thank you.
Come on, we got another meeting. Okay, so we're, we're done with this item for now?
We did it, uh.
Okay. So item seven B, council reports on committee. Greg?
I'm good. They didn't have LaFco. We got another meeting, I'm done, we're good. Yeah.
Let's see, so we had our special sewer meeting and all of our subsequent sewer committee meetings. I had the opportunity this last couple months to volunteer at PRPD and teach some canning classes, which was really fun, to get to engage with the community. There's one more on Friday morning. And then I helped again with the Astronomy on the Lake event, which is an incredible experience if you guys haven't had the opportunity to do that. I did attend the Upper Ridge Community Council meeting, which is always kind of a, a nice little neighborly thing to do up in Megalia, and found out some interesting stuff about what they have going on up there. I was able to attend for a minute the Paradise Arts Center mixer, which are always a good time. I was checking back to see if they had any more flamingo watercolors to match the one I got before. And I was able to help at Paradise High School's back-to-school night. That was pretty cool there. It's so neat to see the level of enrollment. It's, it's incredible. We are, we're in good shape at the school district with our enrollment. And then I'm working on a couple of other little community projects. We have a haunted house coming up at the Elks Lodge. It's open to the community with no admission or anything. And a Christmas preview, if any of your businesses in town haven't heard about it and you're interested in participating, let me know. And then I'm also helping with the Rotary Career Fair for, I believe it's year number three. That'll be held on November 14th at the high school, and that's another pretty cool event, highlighting all of the, all the employers and industry opportunities we have here on the ridge. That's it.
Okay. Attended a number of meetings, won't even cover though, I'll just cover the one highlight that I had this month. On the 28th, the Walkable Downtown Tour that Colette set up was outstanding. A little long, we left at seven in the morning, we got back at eight at night. Yeah, it was an all-day affair. We went down to the Matoti Food Park in Santa Rosa, and that's a food truck park that's set up, and that's a real nice setup, learned a lot about that kind of setup. There also, we went to the Barlow Market in Sebastopol and the Oxbow Public Market in Napa. And there were a number of similarities between all three of them, issues that they ran into and similarities, and Colette captured all of that, and can talk about that later. That's all for me.
I went to the Arts Center's open house thing, and it renamed the, the gallery there. And that was pretty impressive, but other than that, that's it.
So I attended several sewer meetings. I went to the Doug Spiker's Party in the Park, which was really a neat community event. It was, it was really fun. They had the, the two, two pianos, and, and they, they really put on a, a good entertainment. Thank you for doing that, Doug. I did a Capey Morning about our sewer project. We've had several special council meetings. Adventist Church had their ribbon cutting, which I attended. What a, what a beautiful facility. And they're going to, you know, open it up and rent parts of it out. It, it's just a beautiful building, a great, Adventist Church. So I did the insurance. So Boys and Girls Club, the AT&T did a giveaway of computers. And it, it was, I think it was 100 computers, and it was a big deal. They had the area president there, and those kids were just overjoyed to get these computers. It was really neat to, to be a part of that. Also went to the Paradise Arts Center opening, and, and it was really neat. So there was a longtime resident of Paradise. He was very involved in a lot of things here, including Paradise Performing Arts Center, Phil Kelly. And he ran PID for a long time, and his granddaughter, April, owns NYX. And she called me and asked if, if I would come and give a presentation for his 90th birthday and his 50th, or 70th wedding anniversary. And I, it was a surprise to him, and Lori and I went and showed up. I got a certificate from PID to present on their behalf too. And he, he was just so overcome, it was really, really neat. That was one of the most fun things that I've, I've got to do. So that's, that's what I did. So with that, any future agenda items?
I've got one. First one I've ever added. We had a person who came up to the mic and talked about the unlicensed contractor for weed debatement. I'd like to know more about that. I, I felt a little uneasy, I didn't have enough knowledge about why we allow unlicensed and one unlicensed and the other. So I'd like to have a short discussion on that. If they can have that and explain it to us and see if we agree with that.
We, we can do that. If the Contract State License Board allows that, that's.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's fine. Town manager report.
I don't have anything to report to the council.
But we're not keeping you busy enough.
And we have to go back to closed session, so.
Okay, so with that, we are going to adjourn this meeting and go back into closed session with a five-minute break in between.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, it's a fire mitigation. I had a conversation with this lady, license, and we require it? I, I don't know, because he's not required to have to do the work. He was able to bid on it, and then he did, legit. Yes. Yeah. And I, I mean, it's legitimate. Amanda Carcat has an insurance agent, he's a doctor. He can do it, he's a fire mitigation, and, and they're good with it. So, and he meets all the insurance requirements. So.
That'll be the answer, and I just might as well.
And I talked to him myself, and, and, well, that I don't know, you have to ask.
But I don't. I don't know nothing about, say yes or no, I just know I had a question, and I won't tell me right off.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what you want to, yes.
The license?
Yeah.
It has to. Tell me, tell me.
Exactly.
So I don't know if you can change that or not, I don't know if it's a license. That's something we, we, we.
Yeah.
It's not the same thing, it's for the public right of interest.
Right. Yeah.
Not that I agree with it.
Well, I just wanted to learn more about it and see if we have any ability to.
So, just me. Yeah, that was, so me and Ted were. He said, related mid-month slides for being a vegetarian. So, that's good. Because Simon's legs are hollow, and he won't put it down, so. Yeah, I feel so bad. They're already to me, they're having a session, they're.
All right, we're going to the sawmill room. Yeah.
So I want to actually go back to this part, back to art, and this is where I'm coming from. No, and that's why I'm like, that's why I started coming here. I was sitting, and I think we're both like, I think we're going to be doing a bit of a show. I'm seeing. I'm trying, I have to find a, let Steve play. I'm like, yeah. But hearing anybody might be glad to see it, it's not like we're interested. So. This is Mason's mom. This is my, this is my husband, Trump. This is my, well, obviously, it looks just like Simon's.
Yeah, I remember, I'm here, yeah. My boy.
Twenty-two-year-old.
A twenty-two-year-old boy, like, he'll put it down. Yeah. But, you know, he has some comment there. Yeah. If they are, um, I would like. Well, that's still valid, I'm very, 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 very surprised. And it's harder to. It's, it's hard, and it's something that we have to, like, you have to do it for everybody. It's like a whole, like, I keep it, if you have your stuff. But then, but you're always trying to best put a town on hold. And that is, that is where. And that is, that is where I, because Steve actually does, because I'm so, like, I didn't really want her out. Because I'm like, this is my first, I'm like, I'm going to do it all for the town. And I can see that your part, there's nothing that you're not sure of. Everything you find to me is like, literally, there are a lot of towns. That's where I was like, the other part of it, the part of it is, you're in a bunch. Right, no, exactly. Yeah. We've already hired a lot of these kinds of... I got phone calls, you know, just August, June, ten, maybe September. Another people came out and that was like a week ago. I let you find out the first one, I know her. So I come home, I'm not sure I want to have this one. Don't appear complaining. And I'm like, no, I'm not. That's what you're talking about. I am simply a community member, y'all, same as you. Oh, come on, you mean, no, no, no. It's not that it's... And so you have, there's all the things that can be discovered. And clearly perceptions, and that would be the thing that says that, that, that everything will happen. Or this perception that you want to be a credit, that's about you. Right, you want to... Exactly. But the very first meeting that everyone came to draw up a hot shot about chickens, they really actually cared to hear what was going on previously. Like, let's quote the agenda in context. And that actually had an animal... Exactly. And then the person, and then that particular person always likes to be contrary to people that are going to ask you whether they still stuff how else, like, certainly be contrary to people. So that was how I called it, turn around. And I was like, wait, I'm not... Why are you calling me? It's so hard because, you know, you're part of that, you know, change of... Or you're trying to make better... There's not really a 100% where you have, there's different areas. There's not really a bus on your channel and keep that in the, just like, keep that in the boardroom. They have a four second change, twenty years, and so it's... Right now, it is like, you're... Well, it's kind of like, well, they're from the whole set.
This is a step, this is just a stepping stone. It would be Jason Proctor. It's simply a stepping stone to the next step, which is what?
Right. They don't want to show me, right? Lights on the edge, right? The right eye is right, right? Exactly. Because they don't want to look at it. Exactly. Then they still want their... But I have those space in orbit and...
What, register?
But I even sometimes feel like it's overwhelming. And I go, my gosh, we've done it. And it's things that we lose. It's disgusting. It's hard to... My cousin is a tall neighbor. She retired, she's not too bad for a family. She wanted a neighbor, but she was... Because at any point, even if they... At some point, like, that's not going to change. That's characteristic of that. Just basically, right, or if she thinks that they can find it, is what they think. Oh, right, word. Oh, maybe they just... I found a truck that I'm talking about this. Basically, yeah.
Can you ask me if I'm aware of it? Because yesterday, I kind of been off the order. I was like, hey, I'll... This one's amazing. Like, a coat. I'll get it at the top. He's like, okay, three, I'm like, oh, okay. So, he's like, go, go again. He's like, oh, I'll show them later. I was like, oh, really? He's like, okay. For you, for you, it's time. Okay, I'll go through it for you guys. Like, thank you so much. He's like, you're welcome. I don't have to come up all the way.
I lost it.
So, he said, yeah, we'll put it out. I'll get it on the list, see you. And pull it to the house though, because I'm tired. I go out and remember that kind of... I act out that 25 minutes. Get out, Jess was still on my front patio. I was like, I wish I had Mason's number. I would have called him if he liked...
You're not my number to get you connected to Simon's.
I just use like, okay, we'll get him.
I mean, that is just terrible, isn't it?
So...
Simon's 23. So we keep saying, like, oh, we can see. The whole tunnel is almost there. Basically, we're there. It's like, I'll make some edits, you know, so... And I guess it's like everything that they had there. But, you know, not that good, I think. Yeah, you know, Simon's used to like a good home, he used to watch the Simon, yeah, Simon's. You were wise, Simon's. Yeah, giving the hall, you know, last season. I just did, I just, I just... I'm sorry, it's still the root girls. If you see Mason...
I don't want it to blow away.
Go out this door, babe. This goes right to the apartment.
I don't want it to blow away.
Okay. I'll see you, I'll come in for a show. Nice. Nice to officially meet you, Amy.
See you guys. It's like a video of you sitting there all day. It's like 16:20.
Video, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, it is. It's like, hey, what's happening? I just want to buy album. Oh, I have a...
Do you have a card or something?
Um, you might have to... Okay. See you later. Thank you.
Sure.
I think that's the times, because that doesn't belong.
This is the second one in four.
I believe you have a truck, like what's the truck? I just imagine that. And I would have said the first one, so it's not good for the truck. That's just. Yeah. I think maybe one or five. And maybe.
You know what comes along with this is hiring the staff. They're using the Dodge truck, the Dodge Dodge truck. And also the big lights and all of the sound waves coming from the truck. And then the big truck. And then like the most serious part, family and then about that type of stuff. And then the second one is the electric car. And then the second one is the Dodge. And they ended up like dropping back off. Dude, it's the creepiest show. This is back in, uh, Washington, one.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
I should have watched that. At the Dodge truck, uh, it's like that.
Okay, good. That actually sounds, would you recommend that?
Oh, sorry. How do I, um?
I don't want to make you watch that, but I can, I need something to give you. But now that I know to, uh, we need 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 to, uh, I know that there's some things that involve, uh, the word. Um, so, uh, that's all, uh, um, like, yeah, we know this much. We actually, we don't want to, uh, uh, yeah, cause each agency. Yeah, I'm trying to, uh, and it's, uh, why?
Yeah, yeah. And I, um, yeah, just read through the whole document. It's like, uh, 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 uh. So, 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 uh, 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 uh. Yeah, so, uh, 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 about that, like, you're just, like, you're just, I mean, I'm just, uh, I'm just, uh, 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 uh,